We have an invocation today, and who is here to do? There you are. Kay Wilson-Bolton, and everyone, please stand.
Hello, everyone. As you know, I appreciate your willingness to have various members of the clergy come, and bless the city, and invoke God's wisdom and presence on you. And tonight, I'll be praying in the Christian tradition. Heavenly Father, I do thank you for so many things, and I find that I don't spend enough time thanking you for the good things of our lives. When we look around at the trauma, and the tragedy, and the grief, and the suffering, and sorrow in so many of our states and countries around the world, it's hard to imagine us being in this safe, quiet place even with the controversies surrounding so many things. So I ask for wisdom for our city council members as they deliberate, you know, challenging topics. I thank you for the staff that supports them, and I pray that the words that we're going to say in a few minutes together, "with liberty and justice for all," would have one meaning for all of us. I thank you for who you are, for what you want to do in our lives and in our city, and I pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much. We're going to follow by the flag salute. I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to please sit us in the flag salute.
Feel free to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hand up your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. May be seated. Just a friendly reminder to please turn off your cellphones. And we are going to Ms. Castillo, actually, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Crosswhite?
Here.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Here.
Councilmember O'Nealis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juarez?
Here.
And Mayor Chavez?
Present.
All present.
All right, we are moving on to closed session report. Ms. Castillo?
Mayor, I don't think my microphone is working yet. It's shorted, yes. So I will use the councilwoman's. This afternoon, the City Council recessed in a closed session to discuss Items 6A through 6C in the special meeting agenda, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, with City Representatives, City Manager Dan Singer, Finance Director Kristi Ramirez, Human Resources Administrator Lorena Alvarez, Employee Organizations, Community Services Officer Association, and Unrepresented Employees, Executive Management. The next topic was Public Employee Evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957B1 for the City Manager. Other topic was Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.92 with one potential case. The Council could not go through every item. We did go through Conference with Legal Counsel concerning anticipated litigation, and that discussion will continue later this evening. There are no reportable actions.
Great, thank you so much. We have public comment, and we are going to start. This is Item 6. All right, so James Lantone.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and City Council members, and City staff and public, I just wanted to give a brief update on our second annual film festival that we had, which was last this, not last weekend, but the weekend before. We had over 130 films that were submitted that came worldwide. Out of those 130 films, we showed 40 of them at the Santa Paula Theater Center. We had about 200 participants that came to the festival. One actually came in from Spain because they were an award winner, and we were the first ones that were presenting their film, so that was kind of cool. All in all, I think it was a huge success. We had our festival, our award ceremony was at Park 1055, and that was a lot of fun, and they did a great job in hosting us. And so we are already working on our annual festival number three, and hopefully we'll see all of you there next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, James. Up next, Fabiola Gomez. Please come.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, City Council members, and City staff. My name is Fabiola Gomez. I am a Santa Paula resident. And first, I want to acknowledge that the city has done immigration outreach. Mayor Chavez, the city, and everyone who has been involved, thank you so much for doing that. At the beginning of the year, I saw that there was a lot of outreach being done to the community because of certain concerns happening, not just in Santa Paula but across the nation. And I saw a high numbers of people that were in attendance of those outreach. At the beginning of the year, the city, along with other nonprofits, hosted a Know Your Rights event at the Guadalupe Church. And truthfully, unknowingly, you guys were preparing us for what was going to happen. ICE raids have increased tremendously this year, mainly targeting farm workers, people of color. And it has gotten so bad that even citizens, permanent residents, and DACA recipients have been detained. And I should be saying kidnapping because these agents are not showing proper documentation, identification, and are showing intense aggression towards these people. I am a U.S. citizen, but I, yeah, I still, I'm still scared to go out to a lot of public places without having my driver license or my passport with me. Like, I'm truly scared, so I can't imagine other people, how they're feeling. And, and I know this is a scary time because even with elective officials, they have not been giving them the proper access to go into like immigration facilities. So I know it's a scary time, but there's ways that the city could support their residents as we seen like with the Know Your Rights immigration outreach, with the mayor conducted a, talked to the mayor, and a lot of people came and talked about the issues that they felt were related to ICE. But there's other ways to like continuing to host Know Your Rights events by joining also the ACLU lawsuit targeting that ICE raids are unconstitutional. We saw that Oxnard City Council also joined that lawsuit. And then make this topic, this ICE raid issue, into the next agenda, like put it into the agenda and have people talk about how they're feeling, and also have people that have resources for communities come and show their support that there are certain resources for the community in place. When we look back at the city logo right behind you, we always think about how it's the city's capital of the world. And this city couldn't be what it is today without its people, without the workers, without our, without our people, their culture, and everything that we come along with that. So let's protect them and continue doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gomez. We're going to invite retired Reverend Audrey Vincent. And she'll be followed by Trin Nagala?
I appreciate the time. All right, is this better? I appreciate the time to have an opportunity to say, "I'm here, along with many others, tonight, in support of our field workers." We have people who are integral to this community. It wasn't long ago when COVID came, and do you remember there was concern about foods getting to the supermarkets, foods getting on the shelves? But the field workers, the essential workers, were always coming through. They always supported this town. And we are to stand aside and let ICE take these people? No way! I absolutely object, and I hope others stand up and say it as strongly as I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Trin Nagala?
Good evening. I'm Trina Nagala.
Trina, there you go.
Grateful resident of Santa Paula, and grateful for the food that I get to eat that is provided for us by the farm workers. If you have eaten today, thank a farm worker. So I support everything that Audrey says, and I would like to give the rest of my time to Connie Leishen.
Can I do that?
Sure.
I have a, I have a letter from Dr. Abino Aguirre, who could not be with us tonight, and he asked me to read it, so I'd like to do that. "As I'm out of town this evening and unable to personally share my concerns about the presence of ICE in our community, I submit this statement of deep concern for the incident that occurred last Thursday at our family services facility, El Centro del Pueblo Poder Popular, during our weekly food distribution. The presence of ICE agents not only disrupted a vital community service, but also instilled fear and terror among our most vulnerable residents, creating an atmosphere of panic and distress. The families who rely on our services are often in precarious situations facing food insecurity and other challenges. When individuals are confronted with the threat of arrest and deportation in a place meant for safety and support, it undermines their ability to seek help. This fear can lead to decreased participation in essential services, exacerbating their struggles, and isolating them further. Our family serves as a safe haven, our facility serves as a safe haven for families, fostering a sense of community and trust. The presence of ICE disrupts this environment, making individuals hesitant to seek assistance in the future. To maintain a cohesive and resilient community, it is crucial that we protect our residents from fear-based intimidation tactics that can fracture relationships between service providers and the families we serve. The emotional toll of such encounters is profound. We urge the City Council to develop protective measures for our residents, such as establishing policies that prioritize the safety of our community members. We urge individual members of the Council to openly state their concerns about ICE and the brutal tactics they employ." I'd like to give this to our city clerk for attach, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We have Ms. Joy Cummings. Welcome back.
Mayor Chavez, and members of the council, I'm just here because I would like this council to seriously consider passing a resolution or an act similar to what the cities of Ventura and Ojai have done, so that we have something in place to protect our immigrant, our undocumented, and other vulnerable members of the community. So I just am speaking tonight to ask you to take that under serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cummings. Mary Ann Krausy?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you may have seen this headline in last Friday's Pacific Coast Business Times, "California Latino GDP Surges Past $1 Trillion." California as a whole is now the fourth largest economy in the world with a GDP of 4.1 trillion, and Latinos generate 25% of that. If California Latinos were their own state, they would be the sixth largest state in the United States by GDP. Clearly, Latinos are an essential part of the California economy. Latinos have been an essential part of the Santa Paula community, and they are now the dominant force at over 80% of the population. Because of obsolete immigration laws stuck in 1965 America, Santa Paula and California have many immigrant families without documentation, and a large number of mixed-status families, where one spouse has citizenship and the other does not. The recent ICE raids in Camarillo resulted in family separations and unthinkable decisions having to be made when a spouse was deported. Decisions about where U.S. citizen children will be raised, whether U.S. citizen spouses or green card holders will stay in the U.S. where they have jobs and where they speak the language, and whether there will ever again be an opportunity for families to reunite in the United States, the historic land of immigrants. The actions of the federal government have put at risk not just criminal immigrants, but anyone with brown skin or who may look or sound foreign. This is having a profound effect on the Santa Paula community. We denounce the ICE raids, the traffic stops, and the racial profiling that have disrupted the lives of our fellow residents, and we ask the City Council for help. Your council can begin by having a special meeting to explore our local needs and review what other cities are doing. Goleta, Santa Barbara, and Carpinteria have led the way and forged a path with concrete actions. As an example, Carpinteria has created a City Council ad hoc committee that is accessible to the community and responsible to the council to do interviews, and research, and make recommendations. That would be a step in the right direction for Santa Paula, and would help this new pandemic of racism and raids. Please take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. There you are, Ms. Sharon. Please come up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sharon Kufeld, and I come to you tonight from a threefold perspective, perhaps more than three, as a fellow human being. First, as a concerned citizen of Santa Paula, concerned about the safety and quality of life of all of our Santa Paula residents. Secondly, as a veteran of the Air Force who swore an oath to uphold the U.S. Constitution, the bedrock of our lawful democratic republic, against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. This includes our most basic rights and laws for safety in our homes and persons, at work and in our community. And thirdly, as one of the proud members of the Social Concerns Action Committee of the Universalist Unitarian Church founded in this city in 1891, standing on Main Street as a voice for people of conscience for more than 134 years, spanning in three centuries in this city, I urge you to take action on a very highly time-sensitive manner. I come to ask that the City Council sign our beloved city to the ACLU Foundation of Southern California lawsuit against the Trump administration alleging that immigration raids were targeting individuals based on factors like race, language, location, rather than reasonable suspicion of wrongdoing. And I believe you've each received a letter about this. So please join with the other cities in the seven counties of Southern California in this effort. It costs nothing, but the timing for this is critical. We can't wait for another City Council meeting. We can't wait for a couple of weeks out. We need to look at this now. This needs to be joined by the 12th of August, so don't be the last city to do this. Please, don't delay, but stand up strongly and responsibly for our most vulnerable populations. It's the moral and compassionate thing to do, and in keeping with our stated Santa Paula values. Will you do this in our name?
Thank you very much, Ms. Sharon. Next up, we have Mr. Gabe Turan.
I have a helper tonight.
No problem. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chavez, members of the council, and staff in the public. My name is Gabe Turan, and I am currently serving as Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Oxnard. I'm here speaking as individual, not on behalf of the city. I have some items here I'd like to share about, but first, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the community who's come out tonight to speak to you on these acts by our federal government upon our communities that are directly affecting our neighbors, our families, our loved ones. And I just want to acknowledge that and thank them for taking the time to come and speak to their local government about this very important community issue. And I just share that regardless of which side of the issue you sit on, regardless of who we voted for, I hope folks remember that when masked individuals come to our communities without any identification, without any inkling of who they are or who they work for, and they refuse to identify that, that is not what due process or this country is about. And I hope that people seriously consider that, just as the allegory goes, because at some point, when they come for us and we look around, there's nobody left to speak for us because we didn't speak for them. And so I just, I thank the individuals who came out. I do want to share with you why I'm here tonight. I've been going to city councils for our neighboring jurisdictions to share about nitrous oxide, and these are just two example canisters here. These used to be in small stainless steel containers used for confectionery uses or for airsoft weapons, but they've also been used for, as an inhalant for intoxication for people to get a euphoric feeling from, typically a younger crowd. Now, the industry has found that they can make them in these large containers with flavors added to them, and these bright colors and the sweet flavors tend to attract a youth audience. There are demonstrated long-term effects, physiological and neurological, from the use of nitrous oxide for recreational purposes. And even though it's already illegal in the state of California to sell for recreational purposes, there's a major loophole that retailers can take advantage of to still be able to do so. And when they're flavored like this, there is no other legitimate use that I can think of other than people using them to get high. And again, when young people use them, they are running a serious risk of long-term effects. But I bring this up because these particular products are typically found in tobacco outlets. The city of Oxnard, after some extensive study and looking at our tobacco outlets, just recently on July 15th, passed an ordinance to ban the sale of these devices in flavored form for any of those uses, with few exceptions for like medical uses or other uses that are commercially available not to the general public. I wanted to let neighboring jurisdictions know because my concern from a public health perspective is that when we have banned these, that the market may migrate to neighboring jurisdictions where there is less or no regulation of them. So I just wanted to give all heads up. I have emailed your city clerk and your city manager about it, just to give them the staff materials from the city of Oxnard, and I hope it's something that you'll consider. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to connect you with staff on it as well. And I'll just end by saying, I have about a dozen or so of these containers. These are all large. I've never purchased a single one. I found them all on people's lawns, in alleys, in gutters, because they're discarded because people use them and throw them out. And so these are just some of those examples. Thank you for your time this evening.
I have a question for you real quick. So what are these really, I mean, what's the intent of these if they were not flavored? What is it, pesticide?
Nitrous oxide for legitimate use is used for confectionery uses, for, for airsoft in the small form. They also use them in dentist offices for, for folks to get anesthesia so that they can do dental procedures on them. And in flavored form, it's available for dentists, for kids, but they are, it's not sold like this. They don't go to a tobacco shop and buy it. It's strictly medical grade that's sold to the dentist industry.
Interesting. Thank you for sharing that information.
Yes, thank you.
Totally moved me.
And I know my time's up, but I'll share that I have two addictions credentials in the state of California, and my entire career has been spent working with young people in health and prevention. So that's something that's very personal and professional reasons for approaching this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, Mr. Turan. Mr. Singer, you have the information regarding that product. Can we get a report back regarding, do we have an ordinance against the selling of that product in the city? Is the product sold in the city? Can you just come back with us at a future date on that? Great, we have Ms. Ginger Girardi.
Thank you. I thought I was going to wait till everybody was finished, which is fine with me. I'm here this evening because I think all of you know that there's some activity going on with the Ag Museum. That is very unfortunate, in my opinion. I've sent a memo, or you're going to get a memo, that pretty well covers all of the points that I'm going to make, and I'm going to summarize them briefly. I believe that the, the actions that the museum wishes to take, which would be to close public access to the museum, is in violation of their lease. And they have a lease with VCTC, which I signed, so, you know, it's there for 99 years for $1 a year, and it specifically requires them to have an open museum with public access to that museum. There were many vendors that wanted to put in something in the museum when we rebuilt it. VCTC spent $2.2 million on updating and fixing the museum building, another $300,000 to finish the upgrades to the depot and all of the area around it. And then we went out looking for a vendor that was going to provide something to the community so that the community would benefit from that. And the museum that went in there, though, it's important to point out, is not a Santa Paula museum. It is a county museum for everybody in the county. And while we may have some greater access to agriculture and vehicles and things that they use in this area, I can assure you that kids, for example, that grow up in Simi Valley or Thousand Oaks, do not have the exposure to agriculture that some of the people have here. So from my perspective, it's very important that this museum remain open. The, one of the things that's included in the lease is if they close that museum for seven months, the lease can be withdrawn, and the VCTC can take the lease back and they can lease it to somebody else. And I think the museum needs to be told that. They claim that they cannot get any volunteers. I have never seen them advertise or look for volunteers. All of the museums that we have in town have volunteers who go in and spend a couple of hours opening the door or whatever, welcoming people, but they've not ever, ever done that that I'm aware of here. In terms of whether or not we have a lot of people there, the program is up to the county. And if they're not, they've removed the people that were doing the programming and there's nobody there, it's, it's their fault if the programming isn't as good as it should be. Notwithstanding that, it's an important building. You don't want to see it vacant again. Believe me, I got up at 2:00 in the morning, many a night, going over there because an alarm went off, et cetera. It's important that we have a vibrant building functioning in the community. So my suggestion to you is, besides sending them a letter, raising objections to closing the public out of that building, that the city offer to work with them. I've, I've never heard them request help with programming or activities, but I think it's in our best interest to offer to do something to help them so that more people get to go in. I, I'm not sure that they would be willing to accept that help, but I think we ought to at least make that offer to them. My conclusion to you in here is basically to ask you to direct your representative, which I understand is Mrs. Crosswhite, to VCTC to let the commission know that this city is not in favor of closing public access to that building, and we're not in favor of changing the lease. I just would like to add one more thing. I was told by the museum director that her intention is to work with VCTC to amend their lease, to allow them to do the things that she's mentioned in here, which is basically not have a museum, have an event center, and basically not allow public access. To me, that's completely unacceptable, and I would like to just point out one other thing. You currently have at least one event center in town, another one under construction. Why would you want to make a third one out of public property that would take away from the businesses that are here? So thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Audrey. Question, Ms. Cornejo?
It seems pretty important.
our thoughts known once we come to any kind of decision to consensus as a council, that perhaps we can put that on a future agenda item to follow up and see what action we may wish to take.
Ms. Castillo, can you, just for the sake of the public's knowledge, inform us about the process for adding a future agenda item?
Yes. Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two routes to place an item on a future agenda. When it's not time-sensitive, then a form is submitted to the city manager by a council member. That form describes the nature of the requested item, and then working together with that council member, it's determined how much city resources might be needed, and then that is then placed on a following agenda, so, under Items for Future Agenda. And during that item at a meeting, then the city council members vote on whether to place that item on a, then, future agenda. And that takes a vote of, that takes one motion, and then another person's vote, and if nobody objects, then it will go forward. So that's the non, I'll call that the non-time-sensitive motion, middle, agenda item, submittal. And then we have the time-sensitive submission for an agenda item. That can occur during Items for Future Agenda, that it happens later today, and during that time, at least, if an item is so urgent that it needs action to be placed on agenda within the next 45 days, then all that requires is a motion and then a second motion, and then it will go be placed on the next agenda.
You said for time-sensitive, it's just a motion and a second, and then...
But, in that, that time...
Vote.
Just a second.
Just a second.
Just a second?
Yes. Okay. I have a question also.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Ms. Girardi, for that comment that you made, and I seem to concur that I would request that, since our representative, Councilmember Crosswhite, is on Ventura County Transportation Commission, that she's go forth and seek information as to what is occurring, what the time constraints are, because this more than likely is time-sensitive, because it sounds like the wheels are already in motion for a closure in, you know, first of the year, but it's gonna come before we know it. So, that's what I would request from our representative.
So we can discuss that during future agenda items, whether the issue is time-sensitive or not? And any council member can make a request for future agenda items at that moment in time? Great. Thank you for that clarification. And we are moving on to Ms. Girardi, we, Mr. Proctor. The alumni city council is here tonight, huh?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney, city staff, everyone here and all you out there playing the home game. I'm not gonna go into the atrocities of what we've been discussing tonight in terms of immigration, deportation. I just wanted to make a few comments of things that you might consider. One is maybe having a special meeting, if you think the depth and breadth of this, you know, warrants a special meeting to kind of, you know, look at these items. First, some of the things that have been said, consider an ad hoc committee, as you know, that gives you more agility for doing research for two council members, and then they can pass it on to you. And once again, consider signing on to the ACLU of Southern California lawsuit that's already been explained, and also, the deadline is the 12th, so I don't know how you, how you deal with that, but that's another. Also, you could, you know, you always hear this, but try to identify some source of funding for relief for families that are affected by this stuff, mainly for things like rent, food necessities. I'm not suggesting that you do legal expenses. I think that might get, be a kind of a sticky wicket for you, even though that's sorely needed. But, you know, I know there was some funding post-COVID, that's probably all gone away, so, I know, I've been here before, we just have to look in the couch cushions and see if there's something we can, we can dig up. At the very least, though, I think you could provide some leniency in terms of the billings for city utilities, for families that are affected. Please consider that. And also, consider a resolution or some form of powerful statement supporting our Santa Paula residents that are being terrorized right now. I know that this is really tough, because, I'm sensitive to it, because I was in your place, that there's a specter all this time of, oh, losing funding and stuff like that. And I think it's, I understand that, but, the other thing is that sometimes you have to stand up to bullies. And we see universities, networks, law firms being bullied. And I'll just end with this, you know, people are not, they're giving concessions, but they're not getting a lot in return. And I'll just say this, a bully never, never, only steals your lunch money just one time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Ms. Lucet, Lucero? There you are.
Good evening, city council and city staff. As many residents have, here have pointed out how much our community has been affected and impacted by the recent unlawful ICE arrest in our community and our counties. Today is Farmworker Appreciation Day. And it's terrible how our farmworkers are afraid to even go to the grocery stores, to go to the doctor, to apply for basic needs, like, basic needs, like housing assistance and other basic services. Families, and my children's school, a month ago, did not attend their graduation ceremonies because they were afraid to be there. It's a small school. Half of the graduation was missing. It's terrible. U.S. veterans are being detained because of the color of their skin. It's no longer about protecting our country anymore. A few weeks back, ICE was by bonds intimidating our community. ICE has been by the East College campus. Are they trying to arrest our students? They have been our local business and local hospitals. I'm even afraid to drive to the store. This is not okay anymore. This is impacting our community economy and stability. This situation has created a crisis. We are going through a pandemic of racism that has been perpetrated by our own government. I come here to ask you to sign the lawsuit against racism and discrimination, to stand with our community, and we are here today to also demand you to take the time to set up a meeting to hear your constituent's stories, and how this is affecting your neighborhoods. Please stand with our community and make this matter, make this matter a priority by creating a special meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much to the public for participating in their government today and raising your concerns. Ms. Castillo, can you just, for the record, you explained that future agenda items can be placed, and there's time-sensitive and non-time-sensitive items. There was a request from the public regarding a lawsuit to the ACLU to sign into that. Can you tell us procedurally what that means for us to even consider that?
I'll give it a shot. So, if it's a federal lawsuit, you could probably get in on a permissive joinder, so that is something where we can probably file with the court to have them, by stipulation, allowing us to join as a party to the lawsuit, because we have facts in common with the other cities in the lawsuit. That's a procedural question. And then, second, even before doing that, council has the option of going into closed session to discuss whether they want to initiate litigation. This would fall under initiation of litigation.
And that closed session procedure would mean a notification to the public, and then a scheduling of a special meeting?
You would, you could schedule a special meeting, so that's 24 hours' notice, to the public.
Okay.
The one other thing I would add is that the city council has an established legislative and policy statement. I forget what our title is now. Agenda.
Agenda, yeah.
And we would look to consult with that and see if there's any guidance that it provides.
Okay. And again, during the agenda item, that's number 12A, future agenda items, members of the council can request adding something to the agenda, whether it's time-sensitive or not, and this body can make the determination at that moment in time, just for procedure. So stick around. Next up, we got presentations. I'm gonna start with the mayor's recognition. Yes.
I signed up for further comment.
Oh, you, because you read Gabino, I'm sorry for that. You have another comment?
I do.
Because you were just reading for Gabino. Okay. Yes, please go ahead. Sorry about that.
I have three asks of you tonight to support our undocumented and immigrant communities that are being increasingly targeted by ICE operation. Ask number one, follow the example set by Carpenteria and Santa Barbara City Council, and form an ad hoc committee that will focus on ICE activity and support our undocumented and immigrant communities. Ask number two, follow the example of other local governments and allocate funds for immigrant support. Our families are facing food insecurity, bills, transportation challenges, and deportation. Ask number three, finally, each of you received an email from me printed in the Santa Paula Times urging you to come up with a statement regarding council's response to ICE activity in our town. When I wrote that email, I did not know that ICE would appear at Poder Popular last Thursday, when many people in need were waiting in line to pick up food boxes. Two of you thoughtfully responded to my email. Others of you either did not respond, or send a few words that had little meaning for me. Remembering that over 80% of our population has brown skin, as in great risk of being racially profiled, detained, and may be deported, will you, our elected representatives, take the apparently courageous step to compose a response? If you need help, here's an example from the Golita City Council, quote, "In light of the recent rise, rise in ICE arrests and presence in Ventura County, we stand in resolute solidarity with all immigrant families and communities, people who may be experiencing fear, uncertainty, and anguish at this time. We realize that the recent arrests and presence of ICE in the community undermines our sense of safety, trust, and belonging, and that everyone deserves in their community. Now more than ever, we must collaborate as neighbors, advocates, and allies to give our community members assistance, current information, and safety," unquote. The bottom line is this, we look to you, our city council, for leadership. Please do your job. Reaffirm your commitment to us, your constituents. Let us know that you hear our voices. Consider these three asks. Form an ad hoc committee, allocate funds for affected families, compose and publish a response to the ICE presence in our town. Thank you."
Thank you so much. The next agenda item is item 7A, mayor's recognition. I'd like to invite Hector Arrosco and Luis up here, and any other staff who's here with us tonight.
It's actually gonna be my sister.
Okay.
Hector wasn't even making it.
No problem.
Christina?
I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge both Hector, Luis, and the entire staff. I know today is Emily's birthday.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, she was yesterday.
Yesterday.
She's out at solving.
But Flight 126 was an important part of our community, so I'm gonna read this. "In heartfelt appreciation for bringing together an incredible team of hard-working, dedicated individuals who have created not just a place to read and gather, but a true home for camaraderie, music, laughter, and lasting memories. Your devotion to your patrons and the community has been nothing short of amazing. Through good grub, great vibes, and genuine hospitality, you've left a legacy that will be sorely missed and fondly remembered. Thank you for the unforgettable years of service, spirit, and connection to the people of Santa Paula. I, Pedro Chávez, Mayor for the city of Santa Paula, on behalf of the city council and the community of the city of Santa Paula, praise and recognize your collective accomplishment." I wanted to give these to you, and please share with us all of support and love that we have for all of you at Flight 126.
I'm also gonna ask our city council to join us in the meetings over here, and then we can have everybody back, because it was really nice to meet you, the entire community. So you're all ready to go.
You're gonna have to pivot this angle.
Right?
Yeah. One, two, three. Get another one. Perfect.
Thank you. Luis, do you wanna say a few words?
Thank you.
Yeah, wow. Well, Luis, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I honestly was not really even expecting to say much. I didn't really prep anything, but all I could really say is just, thank you to everyone that has supported us. Thank you for being there. Thank you for trusting us with your guys' meetings, with anything, the caterings and everything that we got involved with. It honestly was a blessing. It was a great opportunity. It was a pleasure working with everyone in the city, and everyone, as far as the community. I know my back's towards you guys right now, and, sorry, I can't really speak well right now, but, yeah, just, you guys have been really amazing, and have been really part of our family, and it sucks. It sucks that we put in so much work, and just like that, it got pulled under our feet, you know, just swept off and just didn't matter. And, yeah. We're gonna keep moving forward. There's gonna be other opportunities. I will be managing at Park myself, so feel rest assured that I'll still be able to take care of you guys. So, thank you for your time.
And Luis, how many employees worked at Flight 126?
Roughly about 20, more or less. On-going, off-going, 20.
Please give our regards to Hector and everybody.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up...
Watched it tell us go home. Yeah. Estamos teniendo dificultades técnicas. Los sentimos. Estamos trabajando. I just said we're having technical difficulties. We apologize for the inconvenience. I mean, what else can we say? I mean, what else can we say? Can I take off the headphones for now? Look at my friend with her Pedro Pascal shirt.
Pedro Pascal is popping right now.
Oh, he's so hot.
He went to watch Fantastic Four twice.
Is it good? Are you getting used to the rain?
The next individual from our community that was recognized was Alguilín. Can you please come up, sir? Thank you. So, Mr. Guilín was recently honored as an All-Star recipient of the Latino Business Award, held recently at the Limoneira Ranch, where he actually worked previously. And so I wanted to honor your outstanding contributions, entrepreneurial spirit, and commitment to excellence within the Latino business community. Your leadership and dedication have made a lasting impact and continue to inspire future generations of Latino entrepreneurs. Congrats on being an All-Star Latino Business Award recipient, presented by the Pacific Coast Business Times. So it was an honor to see you up there from Santa Paula with your wife present to accept the recognition that is much deserved. So congratulations, Mr. Guilín. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The only thing I would say, it's probably mistaken a little bit. It gives me award individually, but I have never done anything in this community in several decades by myself. I've always been involved with a group, people working together. And I think the great things about Santa Paula is the unity that we come together on certain, whatever projects we're working on, we have a group of people that will help. And I've always been proud to be participants in those groups of many things that we've done. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. These two ladies, Sandra, puedes pasar por favor? And Maria Hernandez? And, um... I'm gonna go back and forth in Spanish and English, okay? Sandra and Maria, los invité aquí porque quiero que toda la comunidad sepa de todo lo que han hecho ustedes por la comunidad. So I invited Sandra and Maria to share, to city councils, so that the entire community of Santa Paula can recognize their achievements and their hard work in our community, to serve our community. I was recently informed that after fourteen years for Sandra and three years, Maria, that they are no longer with promotoras and promotores. Sandra was one of the initial founding members and put so much heart and dedication to the work of being an advocate for health and for support for our community. Les quiero dar las gracias por todo lo que han hecho en su tiempo como promotoras. Sandra, catorce años en esta posición haciendo el buen trabajo de comunicarse y ser abogar y apoyar a la comunidad sobre la salud. Y todo lo bueno, las amistades que has creído, las asistencias que has dado a tantas familias. Quiero reconocer esos esfuerzos que ustedes hicieron, por eso les invité aquí ahora. Y a veces unas puertas se cierran para que abran otra. Entonces, what I was wanting to mention is that, you know, their service has been heartfelt and everything that they've done to support our working families here in Santa Paula and throughout the county. Because I know that you both have gone outside of our Santa Paula to help people all across the county. And I wanna say thank you, and on behalf of the city council, acknowledge and recognize your service to the community. Estamos dando este agradecimiento de parte de toda la ciudad para decir gracias. And, you know, when one door opens, when one door closes, another one opens. So you carry everything, and you do everything with heart. And I know that you'll be situated. Ya sabemos que hacen todo con buen corazón y que va a haber oportunidades para que ustedes continen el trabajo en otras formas. Entonces, gracias y disculpa que van a terminar esta época que tuvieron con promotoras y promotores. Quiero dar la oportunidad, si quieren hacer, decir algo a la comunidad, porque ha ayudado a muchísima gente.
Buenas noches. Yo le quiero dar gracias principalmente a todas las personas que estuvieron conmigo en los grupos de apoyo, a las que estuve ayudando con todo mi corazón y todo mi cariño, porque éramos como una gran familia. No nada más era, sino que yo estaba ahí para servirle, sino que siempre fuimos como una gran familia. Y gracias a ellos, esa era mi motivación, de salir afuera, sonreír al mundo por ellos. Así que muchas gracias también a mi esposo, a mi hija, que está ahí. Mi hijo no alcanzó a llegar, pero gracias a todas las personas que siempre han estado a mi lado. Y a ti, muchas gracias. Y ustedes.
Yo quiero decirles que muchas gracias a todos por las palabras tan lindas que escuché. Disculpen que les dé la espalda. Al hablar de mi gente, de la gente trabajadora, me emocioné de ver cómo están defendiendo a mi gente. Y es lo que hacíamos, Sandra y yo también, apoyando. Y muchas gracias por este reconocimiento y a las personas que vinieron con nosotros a apoyarnos. Y mi hija, su novio, me da mucho gusto que estén aquí. Gracias.
Están compañeras o familia con ustedes ahorita para que estén en la foto con ustedes. This evening, I had invited Primitiba Hernandez from the 805 Undoc Fund, but unfortunately, she had a scheduling conflict and is not gonna be able to make the presentation today. So we're gonna follow up for the next meeting. So we're moving on to item 7C, Labor Day Parade Poster. Is that the commission, Parks and Rec? Or Labor Day Committee? Okay, yeah.
Not there yet. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the community. I'm Chris Inez, and I am part of the Labor Day Committee, along with my colleagues, Ron Merson, who is our chair, Audrey Vincent, Anita Gonzalez, and Mary Lou Garnica. So each year, it is my privilege to get our students involved at Santa Paula High School, to come up with an idea to make the parade poster. So we started this last year, right when school started. So again, I got on our agenda, and it was on our agenda, to what does Santa Paula mean, but really go back to the history of Santa Paula, of what does it mean in the labor force. And this year, we actually celebrate our twentieth year of putting on the Labor Day Parade. So that's a really big milestone that, you know, members before me have had the honor of doing. So this year, when we sat down, we looked at our agenda, we discussed different volunteer opportunities that we had in the community. So we had already beautify Santa Paula down, you know, the Halloween event at the community center and breakfast with Santa. And one student said, "Miss Chris, that's it." And I said, "If you guys want more, you know, I'll call Dan Singer, you know, call Greg, I'll call other people, you know, if you guys want more volunteer events." And she said, "No, that's what we need to honor. We need to honor the volunteers within Santa Paula that make our community better." And our biggest community people and volunteers are our youth that come out whenever somebody calls, they come out and do whatever. So that's this year's theme, is volunteering. But we're honoring those volunteers within that labor force within the city of Santa Paula. And those are our youth who really care about our community. So I'm gonna have Sophia, our PTSA President Ambassador, explain how we got all the pictures and things.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. This year, I will be presenting our Labor Day Parade poster. This year, we wanted to honor previous posters, and we also wanted to show our vision for the future. We especially wanted to recognize people who have volunteered around various community events, especially our young people, who have taken their time to make Santa Paula better. Three photos show people who our youth have learned from. Thea Babes, who taught us how to make amazing burritos. Billy Mansley, who's known for helping shape our beautiful airport. And Scotty from Scotty Shoes, who not only helped fix shoes, but also took the time to talk to everybody. Other photos show young people volunteering at community events, like the Science Night, where there were many interactive centers for younger kids to interact with. Giving out free books at the Easter Celebration at Teague Park. And helping at the Halloween event, where our police explorers encourage the next generation. Lastly, our service dogs, that not only help around the community as well, but encourage young readers at the Blanchard Library. Thank you.
Wow, awesome. Do you wanna show it to the audience?
So, Mr. Murphy, can you come up? We would like to present you with the...
Yes, and it's Monday, September 1st is our Labor Day Parade. I believe we're the only city in the entire county that has a Labor Day Parade.
Actually, we'll say that's the state.
In the state? Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, next up, we have our Senior Advisory Committee Annual Presentation. We have the commission, or Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm just gonna do a quick introduction. Our Senior Advisory Committee is here this evening to give you their annual presentation. I think their intent was to try and do it in May, but we all know how busy this year's been with everything. So they've been working on this, and I would like to introduce our Chair of the Committee, Mr. Ray Wellman. He'll come up and make the presentation, and then also introduce the other committee members that are here this evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Ray Wellman. I'm the current Chair of the Senior Advisory Committee. I think my fellow committee members are here. Ron Merson, Pam Marshall, and Veronica Geron Stone. Let's see. Let's see, we have the slide.
All right.
I don't know. Which one do I click? Okay. As you can see from the slide, we meet first Thursdays of the month at 1:30 PM. We welcome all. We focus on issues impacting Santa Paula's older community as a recommending advisory committee to city council. And we are currently in search of another committee member. So if you have any interest, anyone or know of anyone who's interested, just please contact the Senior Center. So, the Senior Center is open Monday through Friday. It provides many social and educational opportunities, such as classes, field trips, informational presentations, and monthly themed luncheons. Additionally, the dining room is open during operating hours to provide an older adult community space for socializing. Let's see. So obviously, a lot of classes are offered there, some really great classes. But I wanted to focus on one in particular. And that is the Bone Builders Class. It's been meeting now for a little over a year. We have five volunteer instructors and have recently, due to popular demand, added a third weekly class. So we now have classes Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Participation's growing with an average of between fifteen and eighteen participants per class. It's a lot of fun, it's a really good workout. So please come if you're interested. So, field trips continue to be very popular. For example, we had a recent field trip to the Getty Museum with eighteen participants. And yesterday's field trip to the Ventura County Fair had thirty and maybe even thirty-plus, if I understand correctly. So they're, as I say, very popular. A couple of the informational presentations so far this year included a ballot screening last week with about twenty participants and a Red Cross emergency preparedness presentation with twenty-five participants. And these educational presentations are ongoing with input from Senior Advisory Committee and Parks and Rec staff. The center's themed monthly luncheons continue to average over a hundred participants per luncheon. If you haven't been to one of the luncheons, you might wanna check it out. They're a lot more than lunch. There's music, dancing, good food, and good company. So please stop by, and thank you to all of you who do when you're able. So amongst the most important functions of the Senior Center is the administration of the Senior Nutrition Program. As we all know, state and county budgets have been cut and had an impact on our nutrition program for the last year or so. We are grateful for all of those who have stepped up to restore our program, and we thank both the city for your contribution to addressing the shortfalls and to Park and Rec for their continued creative approach to filling gaps. It's very impressive, and the commitment is obviously serious. So, whoops. I kinda missed that one. The significance of the Senior Nutrition Program is evidenced by the numbers seen in the slide. So you can just take a quick look at those numbers to see how important this program is. The support is evident, so again, thanks for your continued support and from the city and for the creative outreach that Parks and Rec has been providing. and for the creative outreach that Parks and Rec has been providing. Let's see. Okay, and finally, I want to say a little bit about the Santa Paula Master Plan for Aging. First, we want to thank the city for adopting the Master Plan for Aging. Additionally, we want to thank the many people involved in the development of the MPA, including Dr. Maria Mungia, who initiated this project in late 2020, the Senior Advisory Committee, city staff, and Cal State Channel Islands. Thanks to all for their hard work. While all counties in California were mandated to develop MPAs specific to their county, it did not mandate that cities within the counties do so as well. Santa Paula is one of the few cities in Ventura County and California who have their own Master Plan for Aging. We believe this shows foresight and commitment to older adults, caregivers, and people with disabilities. Going forward, the Senior Advisory Committee will be looking at the plan to prioritize issues and make recommendations. So thank you. That's my report. Any questions?
Questions for council members? All right, well, thank you so much for reporting that, and thank you all for who came and to the department staff for working with our community.
Absolutely, the staff is great.
Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Santa Paula Arte y Cultura Collective Presentation. Hello? All right, they're going to set up the technology, and then let's make sure they don't take the clicker.
There we go. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and our esteemed members of the City Council and our city staff for allowing us this time to officially thank you for your support and to formally introduce you to the Santa Paula Arte y Cultura Collective. I am honored to introduce to you as well the board and voting members. I'm the President, Jennifer Carrillo. We have Tracy Hudak, the Vice President. Our Secretary is Nicole Aspra, and our Treasurer is Jonathan Royas. Our voting members are Vanessa Acosta, Augustine Diaz, Luz Maria Espinoza, and Dr. Maria Mungia. We do have two standing committees, which is our Steering Committee, who's chaired by Tracy Hudak, and our Arts Advisory Committee chaired by Jesse Mae Stevens. We would be remiss by not reflecting the participants and organizations we draw experience from. As you can see in this list, we are fortunate for having a wide range of knowledge and experience. I do apologize if I've missed anybody, I will update that list. Now, the mission of the Santa Paula Arte y Cultura Collective is to build a dynamic cultural landscape through the arts. And our vision is that the Santa Paula Arte y Cultura Collective is dedicated to building our communities diverse, excuse me, our communities diverse creative expressions by making the arts an increasingly vital and meaningful part of our public life. Now, in our vision and mission statement, we do say the word art a few times. And now, what does art mean? We have a visual arts and we have the performing arts, which is a nutshell for an ever-expanding list of all kinds of art there, as you can see on the list there. And, excuse me, and we, as an art collective, want to make sure, no matter how long that list is, that we are always embracing and supporting all of the forms of art and along with the cultural traditions. Now, how do we plan on supporting the arts? The Santa Paula Arte y Cultura Collective, which I will refer now to as SPACC, has defined four main points and objectives that we have made our goal to meet and identify. On these next slides, we will introduce these objectives and goals. We are working within a short term, a midterm, and a long-term timeframe for our objectives and activities. In our first goal, to increase the health and vitality of organizations and to help the artists thrive, in this, we plan on facilitating networking and collaborating for the arts community, and to produce a digital newsletter with opportunities and resources. A bit later, in our midterm goal, is to conduct a cultural census of the people, organization, and places in Santa Paula. We also plan to survey the arts community to find out how we can best serve them. Our long-term goal is to facilitate the creation of pop-up events, possibly in storefronts, and identify underutilized buildings and partner to develop a multi-use art center. Our second goal, to nurture the talent and creativity of our diverse community and integrate art into public life. Currently, we are developing our AWCCP, Anything We Can Paint Project. In short, this project is being developed to paint the utility boxes in town, along with anything else we can paint. We are also currently at cruise nights with a free art table for everyone to participate in. Our midterm activities will be in partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to increase the Santa Paula murals and to develop a cultural walking tour of Santa Paula. And our long-term goal is to provide a multicultural, intergenerational arts mentoring program. Our third goal is to bring visibility to Santa Paula's art and cultural community through marketing and promotions. We plan on doing this by developing a shared calendar along with cross-marketing opportunities. This calendar is intended to be a platform, listing all of the art activities happening in town and what you can get involved in. Alongside the calendar is our midterm goal of having a website and a social media presence for promoting and advertising. Once that is established, the long-term goal is to have our presence and our reach go regional. We want everyone to know that the events in Santa Paula and to experience the arts Lastly, I got ahead of myself. Sorry, let's back up. There. Lastly, the fourth objective is in partnering with the city and the others to help Santa Paula thrive. In this, we plan to assist those looking to promote art exhibits, potential projects, and promoting all areas of the arts within the city. Our midterm goal is to launch a signature Santa Paula art festival. As an example, it could be a chalk art festival, a porch concert series, an art car parade, maybe all of them. And in the long term, we want to establish a percent for the arts policy. Now, now I'd like to show you a little of what we have done. We began three years ago during, let me start over. We began three years ago during this time, we've had eight workshops that have engaged our art communities, many collaborations, and many, many more Zoom calls, bringing us together to establish our 501(c)(3), which you all know is no small feat. Now, that, excuse me, we also received a grant that allowed the Bursting with Colors Downtown Banner Art Exhibit. Can you believe that there was 82 submissions for that exhibit? I was one of them. That is actually how I happened to be introduced to SPACC. Now, on this slide, you see just a little bit of the community center's new mural up there. That mural was a collaborative effort with the Chamber of Commerce. When it came to our attention that that mural didn't have a name, we at SPAC took, SPACC took the reins and collected over 60 name ideas from our committee. Our Arts Advisory Committee narrowed down the list to the final three options, and the final name was to be chosen by the chamber. The announcement of that name and plaque will be presented at the dedication ceremony on the 28th, which we hope to see y'all there. We are also actively participating with the community by being in the cruise night with our free art table. And new to our agenda will be the discussion around the potential art installation at Sports Park. Now, what are we planning on doing? Our projection for the remaining balance of this year and onto 2026 will be in reinforcing our foundation and networks in order to have a strong and supportive structure to grow on, developing our systems and decision-making process, as well as integration with the city's processes, and to develop our first annual work plan. With sincere gratitude for the financial support that the city has provided, we want to reflect upon the year ahead and where the funds are anticipated to be used. We plan on setting up our website, social media outlets, along with a communication system to connect the arts community to all. We plan on, the funds can potentially be used in the community art projects like the Anything We Can Paint Project, the partnering with the Chamber to create the new mural, the cruise night free art table expansion, and a youth mural project in the works, and continuing to develop our fundraising plans and events, financial goals, and working with grant writers. And of course, there is so much more. Again, thank you, and with the support and with the city's vision, we are all helping the arts and the cultural traditions thrive in our beautiful city of Santa Paula. Now, I'm out of breath, so if you have any questions, I'm going to invite the team up here so they can help answer.
Questions?
That's how you can contact us, too.
Well, I just want to say, on behalf of City Council, we really appreciate all of you who came to our strategic planning process and raised your voices. I know that we have some items in there that were incorporated, in particular to help support the initiatives that your organization is leading, so thank you for that. And then Tracy and I have been playing, you know, let me get you the certificate, and so I finally have it. So I saw it on the agenda, it was like a perfect timing. So can we invite all the collective members to come up to the podium?
Just also want to say for the record that we are open to all, anybody who's interested. Yes, or the mayor.
I'll back up the mayor.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you so much for that. Items eight and nine, I'm going to move to the end of the meeting so that we can go to item 10, Consent Calendar. We were off most of July, and I'm just going to read what these consent items are and let the public know that the way consent items work is that we have an opportunity to approve them all in one swoop, unless a council member wants to pull an item. And so these are all the things that we've been working on, staff has been working on over the summer, and there's a lot on here. So 10A, approval of employment benefits for underrepresented confidential employees and adoption of Resolution Number 7570 for the term of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027. 10B, approval of employment benefits for underrepresented executive management adoption of Resolution Number 7569 for the term of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. 10C, 2025-2027 Memorandum of Understanding with the Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 721. 10D, 2527 Memorandum of Understanding with the Santa Paula Police Officers Association. 10E, 2527 Memorandum of Understanding with the Mid Management Association. 10F, Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Solid Waste Solutions Incorporated. 10G, purchase of Ford F-150 Lightning EV to comply with CARB Advanced Clean Fleets Regulations. 10H, license agreements with potential union oil building users. 10I, notice of completion for the police station remodel Phase 1. 10J, city lease agreement with the Independent Order of Art Fellows at 866 North East Main Street for city offices and sublease to Athens Services. 10K, service agreement for permanent management software. 10L, Placer IA data analytical software, order form amendment 25 to 27. 10M, approval of minutes of subsequent meetings. 10N, June 2025 warrants and certifications. 10O, acceptance, this is the longest one I've consent calendar. 10O, acceptance of gate director maintenance easement from Lennar Harvest Adelina Nera. 10P, investment policy update. 10Q, designated local authority dissolution and release of funds. All right, council members, are there any items that we would like to pull?
And Mr. Mayor, before the council takes that action or takes a vote, I just wanted to point out a couple of amendments that are out on your dais before you. Notably, for most of those labor agreements that you just read off, the salary schedule had some mistitles in it. It didn't affect any of the numbers, but we've passed out a revised version. We have a revised, I'm sorry, not a revised, we have the redline version of the investment policy changes. The staff report noted that there was a redline version, but in fact, it was the final version. So you now have a redline version in front of you. Those changes are minor. And then to both items 10K and 10L, there were revisions to the fiscal impacts and some additional authorizations that we wanted to ask council to take in order to pursue software and agreements with software companies. We're happy to answer any questions, council members.
Ms. Crosswhite?
Unless anyone else feels the need to pull it, I just had a question on 10L. Mind if I just ask a question? Is there someone from staff that could speak to on 10L how that has, how that, having that software has benefited the city and how we foresee it benefiting the city going forward?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Crosswhite. Mayor and Council, the Placer IA software, we've had it for two years, and what we've been able to do, probably one of the things that's most outstanding is, and most recent, is actually getting numbers on major events we have in town that we wouldn't know otherwise. Case in point, we had an estimate of probably 4,000 people at the fireworks display during that day, and through Placer IA, we found out we had 8,400 people there, some more, almost twice as many as we thought. Another aspect, we do, once a month, we do our business connection, where we go out and meet with the businesses. We're able to provide them with data on where their customers are coming from, where their customers go afterwards. We're also doing data analysis on, data analysis on leakage, both in retail and employment, to look at where are people going to shop outside of Santa Paula, type of businesses, what they are looking for, restaurants, businesses, and also employment, where are people working? What are the specific jobs that they're going to as a business outreach strategy? Those are the businesses we need to talk to. If they've got 50 business, you know, so.
And then one other question, if no one else has a question on that item.
Does anybody have a question on Placer?
And then on, for the dissolution of the development, like the DLA, Designated Local Authority, do we know where the funds that are in that account originally came from? Like, so did the county give us those funds, or why do they go back to county?
Why is it going back to the county?
So where do they come from, and then why do they go to the county?
So they came from the original bond issuance at the time, and whatever revenues have been generated through that, through the surpluses, through interest, through whatever it may be. And it's going back to the county now because now that the DLA has been dissolved, they will redistribute those funds to the appropriate agencies. And then moving forward, the taxing agencies will be, will have the proper distribution moving forward. So this is just a redistribution of whatever's left over. Does that make sense?
I guess so. I was just trying to understand, since those were originally our tax dollars.
But they weren't ours, they were the DLAs. They are the DLAs.
They have to close out the fund, so they have to give it to the county, and the county redistributes the remaining balance.
Exactly. Including the current, the current assessments also get distributed, they don't go directly to us. They get distributed, and that's what this will happen.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for, actually, the items, this is a question for City Attorney Castillo, as, because we're approving all of the contracts, but we did not reach that part of the agenda in our closed session, that there was an item that had to do with labor negotiations. Do we have anything that's pending that we should hold back, or do we approve subject to a later change?
I'm happy to answer that. The couple of items that we'll be reserving for closed session are with one of our bargaining groups that's not before you. And then the other one is some clarification of placement within job ranges that could result in a change if the council supports it, but we would report out on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we weren't doing the cart before the horse if there was something pending on that, since we haven't gotten to that yet. Thank you.
Any additional ones, Ms. Cornejo? Mr. Vice Mayor and Ms. Cornelis, is there something that you wanted to ask about?
I'm sorry, I.
Or you need a clarification on something?
I was looking at something when.
Ms. Cornejo?
Yes, was asking the question, so I missed what she was referring to.
Okay. Would you just briefly?
Just, just what I was.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just asking about, yeah, Councilmember Cornelis, I was just asking about the fact that we're approving the contracts, all the labor contracts, and we still had one that was listed as part of our closed session, which we hadn't gotten to yet. So I just want to make sure that we had procedurally, we're okay to approve this even subject to our meeting later on, so. And that was the answer, we're good. That we're good if we approve this, and then there's changes after? If there are, they can be handled after. And that could be discussed during closed session? And then reported out, this. And would it be just on the topic that's already listed for closed session, or another question that we might have on this?
Correct. It would be pertinent to the two groups that were listed for closed session labor negotiations.
Correct. Thanks for walking that fine line. Because it's closed session items, but we're trying to avoid any conflict. If we approve something now, are we able to make an amendment if there's some change that happens at a closed session? Which, and the answer is, yes, we can make a change.
So if there's nothing else, I would make an attempt at the motion. Oh, is there something else?
Speaking of conflicts, I want to declare a conflict with item 10H, which I have perceived as an actual conflict, and unless the item's pulled, then I'll just abstain from the vote. If it's pulled, then I will recuse myself. And then, and that's the potential union oil lease, that's because I own property within 500 feet, and I'm on the historical side. And then 10J, I'm going to abstain from that vote because I am a member of the Independent Order of Autophyllows, but I don't have an actual conflict because I'm not an officer nor any financial gain from that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, as long as it's not pulled, you may remain at the dais.
There is one public comment. May I stay for that, or should I leave there for that?
I'm going to go for that before you make a motion.
Yep.
Thank you. Question 10O, do I need to recuse myself from that?
Yes.
As the property owner of Harvest, at Harvest?
You have no actual conflict of interest?
Perfect, that's all I have to know.
Okay.
Great, thanks. All right, so we have a public comment. 10H, Brian Schumacher.
Brian Schumacher.
And 10H, just for the record, is the license agreements with potential union oil public, oil building users.
Hi, council and mayor, thank you for having me. My name is Brian Schumacher. I'm representing the Autism Society of Ventura County and our advocacy committee. We're excited to express our full support for the city manager's authorization to enter into license agreements with the Santa Paula Historical Society and Leap Lab for the use of the union oil building. This partnership's an incredible opportunity for the city of Santa Paula to invest in a future that prioritizes science, curiosity, inclusivity, and community building. The union oil building will provide a space for hands-on learning that welcomes all members of the community, including individuals with autism and other developmental differences. As an organization dedicated to advocating for inclusion and education, ASVC is excited about the project's focus on creating accessible STEM education opportunities. Science is a powerful tool for teaching problem-solving, creativity, and collaboration, and this initiative sends the message that science is for everyone. By supporting this partnership, the city of Santa Paula is making a meaningful commitment to its community. This project will inspire future generations of innovators while fostering inclusive spaces that will uplift every member of the Santa Paula community. On behalf of Autism Society of Ventura County and the many families we represent, we urge the city council to move forward with these agreements. Thank you for your vision and dedication to this important initiative. For more information about our own advocacy committee, you can please reach out to me at advocacy@autismventura.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schumacher. All right, Ms. Crosswhite, are you ready to make a motion?
Okay, yes. I was getting confirmation from the city attorney, so there's actually three items that are on our consent calendar that we have redlined. Well, one of them's not exactly redlined, but redlined versions in front of us. So I would move approval of the consent calendar with the inclusion of the changes that staff provided to us on the dais for items 10B, 10K, and 10L. And just to clarify, it's the changes to Resolution Number 7569 for item 10B, and then also those revised salary schedule chart changes that staff mentioned.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any additional questions, discussion, or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye with the abstention of 10H and 10J for me.
So noted. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Consent calendar approved. We are moving to item 11A, Santa Paula Unified School District Joint Use Agreement. Mr. Barnes, Director Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The item that you have before you for consideration this evening, I will say, has been a long time coming, so I'm excited to be in front of you, but it is consideration of the joint use agreement with the Santa Paula Unified School District. I will note that the school district did approve this agreement at their meeting last week, and will also make note that this does address your strategic, one of your strategic goals. So I don't know if that's an award or not, but this might be your first strategic goal that's actually accomplished on your, on your new two-year, two-year goal. So that's before you this evening. This covers athletic fields, facilities. There is an exhibit that lists the school grounds and school facilities that we would have access to. This would include the community center and use of that, so it just allows the two entities to work together and, and share resources to better serve our community. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's what you have for consideration before you this evening.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, council member.
Just one comment, not really a question, Director Barnes. I just want to commend your department and the relationship that's been developed between our city and the school district, because we all benefit from that. So I just appreciate the work done on this.
Thank you.
Yes.
Also, just a comment. This is an item that I know I have several times brought up with the city manager. This was something that we've been working on since the first term that I was on council. So I am very pleased to see that we finally are in a place where the school district and the city are working together really well, and I think that this joint MOU is a sign of that. I mean, yes, we've had the partnerships and we had the more informal things, but to have this formal MOU, I'm very pleased to, the volumes that that speaks, to how far we've come as the two entities working together, so thank you.
And if I could, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Weinstein. He and I were able to meet on this. It didn't take long to get to terms, and just want to thank for his collaboration, too, to kind of work through this and take this to the school board relatively quickly so we can move this along. So just wanted to say that.
Mr. Barnes, what year did you come to the city?
What year did I?
Did you start with the city?
It was May 13th, 2019, if I could tell you.
Every time you provide this council report, we're amazed at the numbers that show the actual youth participating or adults, and so would you say that since your tenure here, you've more than doubled the engagement because of partnerships like this?
I would say absolutely. I say, I would say that these partnerships, you know, when you share resources, when you work together to serve the community, you're able to serve more of the community, right? And that's the discussion that we had with the school district. You know, we were serving a certain number of kids, and they were as well, and those questions were asked, what's our outcomes? To, you know, make it more affordable for families, to serve more families, to make it more accessible to families and all those things, and I think that's been accomplished. I think we still have a ways to go, and we're still kind of trying to climb and chip away at that. But I'm very proud, as you know, when I get in front of you with our department reports, I'm very proud of the work that our department and the staff does and the commitment they have, and I'm very proud to work alongside the school district as well and accomplish these goals, because a lot of it is hand in hand. I mean, you see that, you know, I come in front of you and talk about our, our department, the things we do, but a lot of, all of that, a lot of that is done when we have these partnerships, and there's another partner on the other side doing that work, too, so that we can reach these families and provide these services. So long-winded answer to say yes, very much so. I think those numbers have grown.
Great, thank you. Any additional comments or questions, council members? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Crosswhite?
I would love to move approval of item 11A, the Santa Paula Unified School District Joint Use Agreement.
Mr. Juarez.
And I would second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Let's move on to item 11B, Consideration of First Amendment to Joint Agreement for Operational Funding of the Spirit of Santa Paula Harvard Shelter. And Mr. Singer, who is going to lead us in this discussion?
It'll be your Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. James Mason.
Great. Mr. Mason?
Thank you, city manager and council. So this evening, staff is recommending to council that this First Amendment of the agreement that was originally penned in August 8th of 2023 between Santa Paula, Fillmore, and the County of Ventura, and also approve a budget allocation of $30,008 from an anticipated positive general fund balance from fiscal year '24-'25 in our general ledger. So as I mentioned, in August 8th, 2023, we entered into an agreement with Fillmore and Ventura County. That agreement basically is that Fillmore and the city would provide funding for the Santa Paula Harvard Shelter, and the county would match whatever the two cities put in. The amount that was committed, that we were committed to within the agreement was $288,000 a year. In our budget allocation, we had $200,000 per year for each of those, '23-'24, '24-'25. The hopes through that process was that there was going to be some additional funding and assistance either through the state or through the Ventura County, Ventura County Community Foundation, but that didn't materialize. So we ended up with that difference. The county with Fillmore and the city got back together and created this First Amendment to that agreement to recalibrate. Basically, it ends up being much like an as-built, what was the actual amount that was available and what was spent, so that the agreement is codified to be consistent with what the funding that was to be provided. So that adjustment, their request within this adjustment, instead of $200,000, is $215,000, but less than the $288. As that would stand, that would increase our responsibility from what our actual budget is to an additional $30,000. $15,000 for the '23-'24 year, $15,000 for the '24-'25 year. To date, what is left to be provided to Spirit right now is $164,000. We've had, we've, the county still owes us $131,000 in what we've provided to Spirit. So we will receive from the county $296,000 based on, and part of that will go to Spirit, part of that will make us whole in what we've already paid to Spirit. So if I can kind of help clarify that, in the original contract, we have a request for $131,000, that's for the '23-'24 year, and in the amended contract, this will make both of, make, the new amended contract will make all of that whole when the county reimburses $164,000 for the remaining of the contract. So combined, $164,000 will go to Spirit, $196,000 will come to the city, because we've already paid, paid ahead. But again, that's a shift from $288 to $215, but still outside of our approved budget of 200, so we're asking for a budget allocation from year-end savings to go to that $30,008. But I can ask, answer any questions if there's any more depth you need within that.
Before we ask the question, Mr. Singer, is there anything you want to add to this equation regarding commitments from other cities or other stakeholders?
Only that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, only that this is an adjustment to the last two years. There needs to be additional negotiations inclusive of bringing Spirit to the table to talk about these next two years, because there's been a lot of movement between what was projected when we first came to you two years ago versus what was actually happening, and now versus dynamics between the county and Fillmore and us. So there's some things that we still need to sort through before we return to you with an agreement for the next two years.
Ms. Crosswhite?
So on those lines, I mean, hopefully, this amended agreement helps. My concern is, when do we anticipate having that new agreement? We anticipated in the, this current contract that's before us that we're making the amendment to, that on or before April 1st of 2025, we would all be at the table so that the new agreement was in place by July 1st, which has clearly passed. So when do we anticipate coming to terms on that new agreement? My concern being not leaving our shelter operator in the lurch waiting for us to figure that out.
Councilmember Crosswhite, right now, we're in discussions with them. The difference between this time and last time is Spirit will be a part of those negotiations, and there's some shifts in how reimbursements will happen, but they, they'll be a part of that conversation. I anticipate that discussion will be resolved probably by the next, by September, probably the second council meeting in September, because they're really pushing forward. Also, keeping in mind, we're starting a new fiscal year, and that'll be September, fiscal year starting in July. So we want to get this moving as quickly as possible, to your point.
Okay. So yeah, I just, time is of the essence, I think, in getting that figured out.
Yeah, I'm speaking, to advocate for that expenditure, we just have to make this work, make it right, make everybody else pay what they owe. I am concerned about a lot of the other parts of the MOU that haven't been complied with for whatever reasons, which should be part of the discussion for the next, the next term. This was presented to us as a two-year, this is all we need, by those advocating for it. I'm not saying Spirit, but just that's how it came to us, was that this is, this is a two-year thing, there's going to be an executive director that's going to start fundraising so that the facility can be more safe, if not fully, but more self-sustainable, and, and so, and with certain benchmarks of, of results and that sort of thing. So that needs to be looked at as well. I, you know, we are in a world of hurt. we are in a world of hurt if this facility fails, because that just creates a whole lot of other problems for our community that we need to deal with. So, we need to, I feel, we really need to support and take care of this obligation with this extra funding. But I'd like to see, as you move forward, that we be a little more careful about putting things into MOUs that may not be reasonable, or make sure that the expectations have some benchmarks of measurability as we go along. So, I just want to have that comment. Thanks.
Council members? All right, so I'm going to share my thoughts on this, because we need to make sure that we fix this, but also be intentional about certain expectations moving forward. And one of the things that disturbs me is the communication issue of not working side by side with the shelter and being on the same page and having to get communications at the last minute about, oh my God, you know, we're 45 days away from not being able to function. And so, I think I'm sending a message to the city manager and the director that we need to have ongoing meetings, whether that's a set meeting date that you meet every month on a certain date, so that we can work hand in hand to make sure that these things don't happen again. On the other point is, Ojai has gotten money for homeless. Fillmore has gotten money for homeless, but Santa Paula has not. So, what's not, what's not clicking? Mr. Bennett was here, he was part of the negotiations to help us leverage resources, and he's at the state level. So, if somehow, we need an advocate who's actually going to put Santa Paula in terms of, because we're providing these services to the people most in need. And so, we have Prop 1 funds that are going to come down the pipeline, which means we have to get on the ball and figure out what the other cities did to get this funding, because we deserve it. Our shelter deserve it. And so, I think we're missing the ball and not being on top of these things. Because these funding, these funds are out there, we just haven't been able to secure them. So, I'm just sending a strong message regarding the importance of working with our state partners to, and working with other cities to find out, hey, what did they do? What did they put in an application? Why are they getting funding and we're not? Ms. Crossway?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but while I don't disagree with you that we need to get more funding, there was an allocation, a special allocation from the state through the Assemblymember's office of, I think it was 1.2 million, for the shelter expansion. So, I don't, not saying I disagree with you that we absolutely don't need to work towards getting more funding, like some of the other cities, but there was money that was received for the construction of the shelter from the state.
That was a different fund. Is there any comment by the shelter?
You are right about that, but that came from me directly to Assemblymember Bennett. And it was 1.5 million strictly for construction, no operations, no personnel, nothing. But that was me picking up the phone. So, and Ojai got $12 million for, what, 30 homes? So, and we did try, we applied with Many Mansions, sorry, I'm tired, Many Mansions, Dignity Homes, Ventura County Community Foundation, Hope the Mission, for five or six million to do something at the motel site, and they gave the money to Thousand Oaks instead. So, I'm not here to gripe about that. But all of those facts play into what happens. And Christie has been exceptionally helpful to us. But I will tell you that if you don't pay us on time, everything spirals. We went nine months waiting for the city of Santa Paula to gather the funds and pay us. And in that time, we couldn't hire the grant writer, we couldn't hire the second case manager. So, we fell apart because we weren't funded properly. And to your point, Councilmember Crossway, we've got to be involved in all discussions. There was a meeting with the county with two city representatives that we didn't even know about, and a board letter goes to the Board of Supervisors that we hadn't seen, didn't know about, maybe we didn't need to. But when we're sitting out there worried to death, you know, it's not fair or helpful for us to do a really good job. But I don't want to end on that, because Veronica wanted to say something very nice, actually. So, when you're ready for us to do that, let us know.
Let's do it, Veronica.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and community partners. First of all, we want to thank you for your continued support of Spirit of Santa Paula. We are truly grateful. Because of your partnership, it's, you have been essential to our mission. As you know, the recent reductions in funding will require some restructuring within our organizations. These changes will impact some of our programs and staff, my position included, but our commitment to serving the most vulnerable in our community remains unwavering. In the spirit of collaboration and sustainability, we would like to work with the city to establish a clear and consistent payment schedule moving forward. Having a predictable timeline for funding will help us plan responsibly and ensure uninterrupted services to those that rely on our navigation center and our food pantries. Currently, we have a full navigation center. We have a full house right now, including 10 kids, two dogs and three cats. I'm confident that working together, we can continue to make real progress in ending and preventing homelessness in the Santa Clara Valley. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Veronica. All right, any additional comments, questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I will move to approve the First Amendment to the Joint Agreement between the County of Ventura, the City of Santa Paula and the City of Fillmore for operational funding of the Spirit of Santa Paula Harvard Shelter, and to move, to approve a budget allocation of $30,008 from an anticipated positive general fund balance from the fiscal year 2425, general ledger number 800-2284.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Spirit. Next item on the agenda, fall pavement program, woo! It's getting late. Mr. Woodward?
Well, good evening.
You got some good news for us, sir?
Members of council, this is, this is the good news part, which is also kind of a kickoff, I guess you'd say. It's, it's the first year we're really using our measure of our funding for paving. So, we're super excited to be finishing up some of the last streets of Cycle 1. Some of these streets were precluded by some of the waterline work that was going on last year, as well as just some additional paving tonnage that we need for some of our other streets that were done as part of the Swedish Streets that was completed late last year and early this year. So, we're going to be going back, finishing up some of the Cycle 1 streets. And we're also looking to add on Main Street, which had been paved in pieces. Initially, a few years back, we did 7th to 12th. More recently, we did the four crosswalk locations at Lucata, Cameron, Dean and South Fourth Street. The result was we kind of had a mishmash of paving. We also had some, some safety stenciling that really needed to be completed. Some of the, the finishing work with the crosswalks, the contractor was unable to complete some of that stenciling. So, we really wanted to prioritize getting Main Street done. Additionally, it did suffer from some of, I think, the impacts of traffic detouring during the Harvard construction. So, it's a bit worse for wear, I would say. So, we'd like to add that on to this year as well, and hopefully complete one more arterial of paving. You do have an updated report on the DIES. The update to that is really, really just the fiscal impact section that clarifies the disposition of the funding that you'll be approving tonight. Thanks to Christie Ramirez and Ruth Juanes from our finance department as well. Very, very pleased with their assistance to help this happen tonight. With that, be glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Council members? There are two streets that we've shared concerns about in the past that are landmines, orchard and park. And you shared with us the possibility, because those are cement streets of some sort, where we can find maybe a temporary solution, since we can't get to the underground, maybe we can resurface, because they're cement. And I don't see those streets on here, and those are really critical. That's what the community saw as the poster child of Santa Paula pothole.
The, the condition of park orchard streets is pretty deplorable. We are going to be starting the water main project, which is going to replace the water mains and do some sewer replacement in those streets. It's likely going to be coming along next spring. The idea being, we're going to try to get the water mains done so we can come back and pave, ideally later that year. They've been bumped off the schedule a couple times. We, we may look to some interim kind of relief for those streets, even if we just go in and grind off some of the asphalt, which is really a lot of the problem out there. I don't think it's a real expensive interim, but it needs to be done anyway before we pave. So, we may kind of see how the paving is shaking out in terms of budgetary capacity. And if that's possible, we will try to get in and maybe provide some interim relief for those guys as they're awaiting the water main work. What we didn't want to do is go in and pave the streets and then come back one season later and start cutting up the streets and, and doing water mains. I think if there's anything that might be provocative to the community, it would be coming back and tearing up those streets right after we pave them. So, we're going to push the designers to get the water main plans done, so we can get that out to bid next spring and kind of give the community a little bit of, of hope in terms of timing on that.
Thank you for that information. I'm looking at an Exhibit A that we spoke about last year, and I noticed a lot of the streets that are on this Attachment A stated that there was an estimated completion date of June 2025. And so, that was last year. We said we were going to do something and then we didn't do it. And it was a year of not doing much of anything. What was the main reason why we did not keep to a timeline that we projected initially?
Yeah, for the remaining streets that haven't been done, the, the water main work that needed to be done in a somewhat emergency fashion for Mill Street, which was essentially from Mill Place all the way up to Terracina, was affecting some of that paving work. And we didn't want to go in and partially pave those areas, but we'd rather go in and completely repave them once the water main work was done. The water main work really kind of obscured the paving of those areas. And we, we ended up using more paving for some of the other streets than we anticipated to. We had some poor subgrade conditions. Some of the concrete streets required more pavement than we anticipated to. So, we held those off for this year and will be looking to get back and do those here in the, in the, in the fall.
Aside from those delays, were there any budget issues?
We, we used a lot of the budget for paving for some of the, the tonnage overages for the streets that we needed, the extra asphalt paving. So, we began to run low on, on paving budget. And we were using more on some of the concrete work that we were doing to fix ramps and that type of thing. So, we didn't want to get partially extended into those streets and then not be able to complete them. We thought it better to go back and do everything in one swath.
I did ask the city manager that on future reports, if we can please put the PSI index for the streets that are being worked on. I think as council, we wanted to know what were the conditions of the streets and how are they prioritized? Because we gave feedback more than a year ago about figuring out, we wanted to focus on those that needed the most work.
We'd be glad to provide that in future reports. The streets that are being paved were part of the final Cycle 1 paving that had been programmed some years back. We're, we're excited to get them done, because we're really excited to get into Cycle 2 and then begin to have some of those discussions, hopefully here in the fall, as we look to program Cycle 2 and present some options to council for what we can, what we can prioritize as streets in the next cycle.
And then, can I ask a question to the Public Works Director? Is he here? Yes, sir. I think a couple meetings ago, we talked about this tool, so that the community knows when their street's going to be, at least if these are the ones coming up. Has there been any, have you looked into that possibility? So, it's kind of mirrors what community development is doing with new projects and constructions?
I'm sorry. I'm having a little bit of a physical crisis here tonight. I didn't catch the very first part of that question.
So, one of the things we want, we have a tool already in community development. So, if there's projects happening, you go to the website, you can see, okay, it's on this street, right? There's color-coded projects, it tells you what the project is. We thought if we, several meetings ago, we, we brought the suggestion that why don't we mirror the streets that are going to be repaired to something like that, so that the community knows, oh, wow, this is coming up this fall?
On the city website?
Has your staff had an opportunity to look into that?
There's, there's still, we have a couple members of our staff who are involved in training to be able to load that kind of information, update the, the Public Works portion of the city's website. And I think they have one more training to do.
Cool.
And then they'll be ready to go on that. And we can get, certainly get that information out.
That's great. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I took a lot of time there, folks, but.
I just have, I just have a general question about street repaving, since we have you here and we're talking about it. When a street is repaved and it had a speed bump on it, is a speed bump always replaced, or is there a reason why it's not put back?
Generally, unless the community has requested the speed bump be removed, we always honor the, the speed bumps that are already there. They've been put there for various, you know, various community reasons, requests. And so, we always replace the speed humps, unless we have a request from the community to remove them. And that hasn't happened.
And what would be the process for someone in the community to request a speed bump for their street?
We have a, a policy and a process for how you request speed humps. And we've actually written out the policy, which we'd be glad to forward along to council and we can make sure that that's on the website as well.
That would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Crossway?
So, two things. One is, it isn't 100% true that they're always put back, because I know of some that have not been put back. And I believe the reason had to do with the speed at which people were driving on the street or something. I don't know. But I do know of some that have not been replaced in the last few years and staff had whatever reason they had for why those weren't replaced. But my other comment that I wanted to make was that there has not been 100% agreement from the council on, that's fine if we put PCI of what streets are on here. But I think that we need to have, at that next future meeting that Mr. Woodward was talking about, we need to have a more general conversation about the approach and the pros and cons and best practices of how we approach the street maintenance.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you'll recall that like a year and a half, two years ago, the council approved the temporary paving of Virginia Terrace, the 1,000 block, because it was really so bad, knowing that eventually we'd have to dig it up to replace the infrastructure for the crosstown pipeline. And hearing Mr. Woodward and our Public Works Director that they're going to do some repairs on Park and Orchard because of the combination of concrete and asphalt. So, I challenge you that if you're going to be expending that time and effort to grind down the existing asphalt over concrete, that please consider that, you know, the rainy season's coming up. And if you try to pave asphalt over concrete, it may not stick. So, the hybrid would be maybe you consider putting concrete over concrete as a temporary play and pavement over pavement as a temporary repair before the spring. Because who knows how much rain we're going to get? And those streets are just the worst in town. So, I would ask you to consider doing those too. Thank you.
And just for the record, this is not the five-year payment management plan. When do we expect that to come back to council?
We're looking at coming back to council in probably more of a workshop mode here in the fall. We had presented some ideas and gotten some feedback from council a time back. But I think with- time back. But I think with the measure of our funding, with knowing what we know in terms of budget, it's worth coming back for another look at this and talking priorities and some different options for the five-year cycle two.
Just a quick memory or comment about this whole issue. When I came on council a little over four years ago, so that was pretty early on in the first five-year of the plan. That year, we were able to accomplish a lot and do more because the price of petroleum had gone down, and therefore the price of asphalt was down, and that enabled us in the same budget to do more. So I just say, let us all hope that we see those prices come down so that we can do more.
And then I'd like to request that when these streets start coming up for prep or, you know, gearing up for these repairs, that the council be informed when those projects, when those streets are going to start. It's helpful for us to know, especially when people are reaching out to us, instead of seeing something on social media.
I would also like to request that we make sure that we communicate really well with the residents, better than we did on the last round of paving. Everyone loves their stuff being paved, but they don't like not knowing that their road's going to be blocked, or there's going to be, you know, they're going to be unable to get their trash picked up or whatever. So just making sure that we're communicating with the residents and also communicating with our waste hauler to make sure that they know what streets are being done on what day, so they can say, wait a second, you know, that's their trash pickup day or whatever. So if we can just make sure that we're coordinating all of that, hopefully better than we did the last time around, that would be fantastic. And making sure that we don't, that we still have sewer covers from the last round of paving that never got uncovered. So maybe that's not a problem. It seems like a potential problem to me, but I'm hoping that that's something that, A, we can get resolved if it needs to be resolved, and B, we can make sure that on the next round of paving, that that doesn't happen again.
All right. Is there a motion to approve, authorize the city manager to issue work order?
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to issue a work order for J&amp;H Engineering to provide street maintenance services in accordance with the three-year street maintenance agreement.
All right. There's a motion through a second.
I'll second.
Second. Any additional comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Woodward. All right. Let's move on to Item 11D. Before we do that, does any council member need to use the facilities? So we will take a two-minute recess. We'll be back three minutes.
It'll turn into five.
Five minutes.
It'll turn into five.
We are at Item...
11D.
11D. Athens Services requests for extraordinary adjustment to maximum service rates for residential and commercial waste collection services. And who do we have here?
Good evening, Mayor Chavez and council members. Mr. Singer, for the record, my name is Bruce Beluski. I'm with the Public Works Department, and tonight I am presenting Item 11D, Athens Services' request for an extraordinary adjustment to maximum service rates for residential and commercial waste collection services. As described within a prepared staff report, this item comes before you because of Athens Services' ability pursuant to Section 4.08 of the Exclusive Collection Services Agreement between Athens and the city dated October 1, 2022, to request a rate increase above those previously approved by the city council for extraordinary reasons. Specifically, Athens' reasons for the company's two different rate requests are, first, unanticipated gate rate increases at the Sea of Oxnard's permitted disposal facility, commonly referred to as Del Norte, which is Athens' preferred destination for waste collection from the city of Santa Paula, and, two, Del Norte's refusal to accept green waste collected from Santa Paula due to concern of accepting such material after the California Department of Food and Agriculture declared a temporary quarantine in the zones surrounding Santa Paula in an effort to restrict the HLB citrus greening disease. Since you all have received the comprehensive staff report detailing this item and a copy of Athens' letter to the city, I will now conclude my presentation and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
That's all we have from the city side? Any additional?
You want to go into a bit of detail about what the requests represent?
Well, there's many items, issues related to this. I'm hesitant to go over all four pages or five pages of the report. What in particular would you suggest that I focus on?
Why don't we take a pause, and we'll have Athens do their piece?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, because I know they want to present, and they have, and it might be easier then for council questions for staff.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. All right. Rondi, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Chavez, members of the city council. My name is Rondi Guthrie, Vice President of Government Affairs with Athens Services. Also wanted to introduce a few members of our team that we have here, including Executive Senior Vice President Gary Clifford, Executive Vice President John Beerly, and our General Manager of all of our Ventura County operations, Chris Handy, and also Sidney Stoll, who I think most of you know on our Government Affairs team. Wanted to go through, and I will certainly get into some details, Mayor, of what our proposal consists of, and happy to answer any questions, of course, throughout the presentation. Wanted to start with, we take great pride in our partnership with the city of Santa Paula. We believe in becoming part of the fabric of the cities we serve, and we're incredibly honored this year to be recognized by the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce as a large business of the year. I serve as a board member on the Santa Paula Chamber. Our staff has been instrumental in helping to get the Young Professionals Group up and running again here in the Heritage Valley. We support the great work of our local nonprofit organizations to the tune of $50,000 a year, including public safety organizations and the Boys and Girls Club. We live, workshop, and volunteer here in the city, and we are your community partner and have implemented many service upgrades over the last few years, including a new fleet of trucks, a new street sweeper, new bins and barrels for all of our residential and commercial customers, and something I'm very proud of, an increased level of customer service satisfaction. We've seen a significant decrease in customer service calls, which just shows what a great job our team's doing out in the field. Next slide. Thank you. I wanted to touch on some of the programs and services we offer in our contract with the city. You'll see we have bulky item pickups that we offer to our residential and multifamily customers. We have a senior discount of 10% that senior citizens 65 and over can take advantage of. We have a robust outreach and education program consisting of our recycling coordinators that you see out at our businesses every single day, making sure they have the training and education and materials to know what goes where and that they're servicing their business appropriately. Street sweeping, again, is a really big part of the contract you have built in here. We offer two free We offer two free HHW e-waste compost giveaway events in April and October of every year. We have holiday tree recycling and a move-in, move-out collection service, along with some free city services that are in your contract as well. So the request here before you today, here are some of the details of this request, is, you know, based on some of the things Bruce mentioned in his report, the citrus quarantine, which, again, I'll get into a little bit more of the background there, and unforeseeable cost impacts related to both the citrus quarantine and a really high spike in gate rates at the Del Norte Recycling Center. We're asking for a 4.7% increase over two years in relation to recovering costs from the citrus quarantine, and that will be completely removed from rates after being recovering costs over two years, and then a 3.55% one-time increase to the base rate to offset the increase we've experienced at Del Norte. So a little bit of the background here. As Bruce said, in October of 2023, the California Department of Food and Agriculture declared a citrus quarantine inclusive of the city of Santa Paula, which in turn made Del Norte not be able to accept the city's green and organics waste. They're not on an approved handlers list for quarantined material, and which then in turn forced us to take our, the recycling to Crown Recycling in Sun Valley, excuse me, organics materials to Crown Recycling in Sun Valley. At the time, there were no other local facilities available to accept the organic stream here in Santa Paula. This led to higher costs for labor, fuel, maintenance, and disposal. On the, and with an annual cost impact of approximately $341,000, and that is inclusive of the city's franchise fee as well. On the disposal side, clearly, well, you'll see, sorry, the chart up there that shows significant rate increases at Del Norte that were unforeseen and not within the control of Athens. You'll see recycling increased from $0 to $48.26, and that $48.26 is inclusive of a $4 out-of-city fee that they charge if the waste is coming from outside of Oxnard. So really, a 4,800% increase we saw just in recycling there. On the disposal side, we have an annual cost impact of approximately $257,000, inclusive of the city's franchise fee. Bruce already went over this. We're, you know, certainly able to take what, you know, you might consider normal CPI increases into consideration, something that we should be planning for in our operations and pro forma with every city that we serve, but these, this large spike, really big increases at, in disposal rates, is far more than we could have anticipated and accounted for in our operating plan with the city. The citrus quarantine that led to a change in our operations plan was outside of Athens' control, not a usual business risk, and not reasonably foreseeable either. And we, I just have the contract language up there. That is the reason why we're here tonight, asking for this. I wanted to touch base on our operational model to show you some of the changes that we've had to make and some of the mitigation measures that we've taken as well to really minimize the impact on the city. Our trash continues to mostly go to Tolan landfill. However, Saturday commercial routes, obviously there are businesses that need service on Saturdays, those routes must still go to Del Norte as, at the increased rate that we saw on that chart, because Tolan is closed on Saturdays. So we do still experience that, that increase. I do want to let you know that we've made significant operational changes to ensure trash routes were not going to Del Norte at any other time but those Saturday routes. For example, we went from taking 300 tons per month at, to Del Norte in late 2023, early 2024, to less than 90 tons per month currently. And then you will see that we did utilize Crown Recycling for the organics waste from October, when the citrus quarantine hit, through May of this year, when a local facility became available and able to accept the city's organics waste. Recycling is still going to Del Norte and remains the best rate within the region, even though it is at a significant cost from, to what we were paying before. And then, you know, keeping in mind, I think we're, most of you are aware, up here, the new Agarman facility is expected to open soon, and that should certainly help kind of stabilize and accommodate, you know, regional organics streams. I wish I had the answer to that.
Twenty-six?
Yeah, I, we're, you know, it's been a while in the making, so we're all hoping it's soon, but I don't have an exact date for you. Okay. And then the rates. So you can see exactly what's going to happen here and explain to your constituents. There is a lot that goes into a rate, a lot that is built into that rate, and it is very difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison to virtually any other city, as every contract, every, you know, service program is different, you know, city to city. As I discussed in showing you the programs and services we offer, you know, in this particular contract, we have street sweeping. You take franchise fees into consideration, you take outreach and education, you take free city services offered, major capital investments. I mentioned we have a new fleet of trucks, a new street sweeper, new bins and barrels, disposal rates, local ordinances, state laws, you know, all of those things go into building a rate for a city. So I wanted to walk you through, so you see the exact impact over this kind of two years that we're, you know, asking for the citrus quarantine, and when that subtracted out, and what the disposal increase would look like. Of course, in addition to your, the already approved annual increases that we'll see October 1 for the next few years. So if you start at the left, you'll see the current monthly rate. I want you, I want to make it clear that the increases we're talking about here, we are basing off the current monthly rate, so not the increase we'll see in October when the annual increase comes in. So we take the current rate, it's, I'm going to try not to complicate this, I had to break it down for me, so to, for me to understand. We actually back out, the city has a 50-cent HHW fee on every household, that's Household Hazardous Waste Program. So you back that 50 cents out, and then we add the 6.9% annual increase. So the next column over, you'll see what your rates will be per year 218, per the contract, with the 6.9% increase that takes effect on 10/1/25. So building from that rate is where we will then add the disposal 3.55% increase. And in your staff report, everything's sort of based on the 64 gallons, just kind of that middle, the middle, you can see there, so I'm just going to go there. So on a 64 gallon, that will add $1.20 a month to somebody's rate, and the 4.7 citrus quarantine would add $1.59. So we're talking about a $2.79 increase, monthly increase, for those two increases we're asking for. So in year one, you would, you see, you would see the rates where it says, the next column over, grade out in 10/1/25. Year one, that would be the rate that you would see. Year two, we have the 6.9% increase, the 3.55 is no more, we had the one time in the first year, and so all we're adding is the $1.59 citrus quarantine fee to year two. So then you would see the rates in 2027, six, year two would be 2020, 26 would be year two, I'm sorry, it's like a little complicated, so I want to make, walk you through this. And then, in the third year, you see where we subtract out the citrus quarantine fee, and rates actually drop. So that's, hopefully, walks you through what it would look like on a monthly bill to your customers. And then on the far right is the amount of customers serviced by each service level. Happy to take questions now, or at the, I'm almost done, if you want to just wait until the end, or if you have it up fresh in your mind, I can.
Citrus quarantine?
Yeah.
Do we know, I mean, will it, I mean, do we know it's going to continue, or it ends, or how does that work? I don't, I don't know anything about that.
I will just answer in relation to our operations, it is, it no longer comes into play, because we found a local facility as of May of 2025 that is accepting your organics rate that has stabilized things for us. So there is no additional cost impact as of May 2025 due to the citrus quarantine. I've heard, citrus quarantines can last years and years and years and years, but, so I don't know if.
It won't impact the.
But it's no longer impacting, we had that 18 months of cost recovery that we're asking for, and there's no additional impact, no matter how much longer it goes on in that regard. Okay, yeah. And then I did just want to show you and the community, because, you know, we, you know, in the industry, 96 gallon, 64 gallon, 32, you know, 5 gallon, you know, I know what I'm talking about, but 96 gallon is the largest container we offer. We have bundled rates here in Santa Paula, which means that your service is based on your trash service, your bill is based on your trash-sized container. But we have variable sizes available, so we have the 96 gallon, we have a 64 gallon, we have a 35 gallon, in all three waste streams. So it is, you know, everybody should choose the trash service size that works for their household, you know, would just caution that you, you know, obviously make sure that your trash fits in there every week, because, you know, one overage charge could, you know, wipe out your savings if you're trying to save, save money. And I did just want to touch on SB 1383. I think we all know what 1383 is to this point, state law aimed at reducing the amount of organic waste, including food waste sent to landfills. We're proud to say that Santa Paula was the second city in the county to become SB 1383 compliant, behind the number-one city that is also an Athens customer as well. So very proud that we were able to accomplish that here in the city. And I mentioned this piece of legislation because it has been a real game changer in how we collect, process, dispose, and report on the impacts of reducing methane emissions from landfills. And that is all I have for you, but again, happy to take any questions that you may have.
Council members.
Ms. Cornejo.
Just to kind of to kick it off, I think from what we're hearing from both discussing with staff and, and I don't know if everyone else, I've had a meeting with you to explain some of the issues. Seems like there's a misunderstanding or not set, the understanding of whether this is an all or nothing or negotiable. And so I'd kind of like to have, and I don't know who would address that, but I'd kind of like to know where, where we stand with that, so.
If I can start, and if staff has anything to add, but I would, I would say we feel strongly that this is a package proposal for the city. We've been in talks with city staff for almost a year probably and have presented, you know, this is, I think, the third or fourth revised proposal we've submitted to the city, and it started out with one larger rate increase that would have been compounding over the life of this contract to address both the citrus quarantine and the disposal rate increase. And rightfully so, I think the city did a great job. I think we completely understood and found a way, I was really seeking a way with my other government affairs colleagues, like, how can we not have this compound over the life of the contract, but get, you know, recoup, you know, our cost recovery on this? And one of the ideas we came up with was the citrus quarantine being this limited two-year, you know, payoff, if you will, you know, on the cost recovery side of things, that could then be completely removed from rate. So if it was only an 18-month impact for a finite amount of money, let's not have it go 25 years, you know, 35 years into this contract and continue to impact, you know, the, our residents and businesses. So that's why we structured it that way, and then we were able to reduce the disposal impact, the disposal increase that you see tonight. So that's, that's our position on that. I mean, you know, just hopefully that explains why we believe it's a package proposal.
And I think the, the error we made was because we had been in discussions about the one time versus something that would be more structural, that in our staff report, we thought it was an option for the council to look at one, both, none, kind of thing. But I think as Athens has presented, it's their request that it all be looked at as one package, even though there's two different components.
Ms. Crossway.
Yes, I have a question, and I'm not sure for who on your team, if you're the person, or if there's someone else back there, but in section, so can you explain from Athens' perspective how this request is in alignment with Section 4.08 of the collections agreement, which outlines the two provisions, either the city mandate or the state law, change under which the request is being made?
Yes, there's actually two components in that section, and one is where if there is a city-directed or state-directed change, you must approve the rate increase request, so meaning if the city came and said, we're putting bike lanes in and our trucks won't fit, you know, on that section of the road anymore, and we need to buy new trucks to, you know, service the city, you know, that would be a city-directed change, where you would, you know, contractually have to honor, you know, the rate increase that would come with that. Same with the state-directed change. The other section, in that section, other clause in that section, is the part that addresses the unforeseeable circumstances, things outside of the contractor's control, and, you know, unanticipated circumstances, which we believe these two items fall under.
Would it be, would it be helpful to read?
Yes, could you, Ms. Castillo, would you?
Sure. Do you have it up, or I have it here in my file somewhere?
Ms. Castillo, can you provide that clarification?
Yes, so it says, "The contractor may apply to the City Council for consideration of a special interim rate review, should an event or circumstance occurred or will occur, which is not reasonably foreseeable or within the control of contractor, and is not a usual business risk of contractor." And council's final determination, it says, "is subject to the sole discretion of the city, which shall not be exercised in an arbitrary or capricious manner." And our contract goes on to define what a usual business risk is, says, "It shall include routine changes in the costs of providing services, external economic conditions existing in the normal course of business, and changes in the market for recyclables." So council will have to, and Athens will explain and walk us through why they feel that the events, just the gate increase and the quarantine, which I understand led to decision of the, gosh, what is it, Del Norte, Del Norte Station to reject your disposal of waste, why those are either not reasonably foreseeable or not within the control of the contractor. So that's the first prong. Either, one of those must be supported. And then, in addition to those, Athens has to explain why it's not a usual business risk. Those two causes are not a reasonable, unusual business risk.
Can we break it down with, starting with the quarantine itself?
Yeah, of course, yes. So I don't know if we need to pull any slides back up, but related specifically to the citrus quarantine, you know, this was a quarantine placed on the city by a state department that forced us to make operational changes that were certainly unforeseen, not anticipated, not a normal business risk. We, I don't know, maybe Gary does, if we've ever operated under citrus quarantine in any of other, other. any of other cities, I doubt it. So, you know, this forced us to have to find a new facility to take the city's organics waste. And while we did due diligence to try to find another local facility that may not have had some, you know, as big of cost impacts, there were cost impacts involved, as I stated, with taking this down to Crown with labor, fuel, maintenance, you know, that were just part of the equation of having to take your organics waste to a different facility, again, due to a quarantine that's completely outside of our control.
Did you want to say something? I noticed you were getting closer to the front.
I talked to you before, and I appreciate being here tonight. I just wanted to support what Rondi's saying. These were not only Santa Paula things, these are significant things in the industry in the region minus the citrus. The disposal changes, there's, there's cities that have taken 30, 40, 50% rate increases as a result of what's happened in the disposal market. What I think is of note here that we didn't talk about a lot is we've been working with the city and the staff for over a year on this, and staff was very diligent and very thoughtful in negotiating this. So it wasn't just like, hey, here's the rate increase, and here's the reasons why, and thank you. You know, staff came back and said, no, let's work out a way where we can shave that down. And they negotiated several times from the very beginning in doing that. And I think Rondi and our staff did a really innovative and good job in looking for alternatives. So the good news is, is that your diversion wasn't affected, all of the numbers are still good, but we did all the motion to make sure that your green waste was still, your organic waste was still divertible, it wasn't quarantined somewhere else, and we absorbed that cost. And we were, again, came to you with a number and now have negotiated a number that's better for you and not as good for us in that goodwill. So I would just say that what I want you to note is that if you looked at any other city in the region, in this county or in any other county, there's been several significant changes in the landfill and disposal market that were out of control of every hauler. And whether the city hauled it itself or whether they had a hauler do it, it still impacted them the same. And so those rates were significant. And then unique to this region was the citrus. And it was just very interesting because in the area that I live in, I couldn't even buy a citrus tree for a while. I went to go buy a new citrus tree, and they said, hey, you can't buy one because they're quarantined. So it was just very interesting. So I did find one out of the region that was like three times as much, that I think that the tree was $200 normally, and buying it out of the region and all the stuff that they did, it was $600 for a tree. So I said, I'll wait until the citrus thing. But I mean, there were, there was a lot of thoughtful work that went in with the Public Works Department and the city management in coming up with this reduced version of our ask, which we believe both legally and ethically meet all of those criteria that are in the contract.
I got a quick question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
In, in your previous slide, you showed Del Norte, which is Oxnard, and Tolan, which is run by VRSD. Who owns Crown?
We do.
You own Crown?
Yes.
So we take our stuff, trash down there, but the costs associated are the extra distance you're traveling?
Yes, the distance we're traveling to get it there and then where we take it in its final destination. But we don't reject, you know, we didn't have those same limitations to taking it in at our facility that the ones up here did during that time. So it was only for that period of time, and as Rondi stated to the mayor earlier, we mitigated all those circumstances, but not during that, not during that period of time. It was just the time where we had to work all that out.
So council member, Cornelos and myself were not on the council when the agreement was brought in. Can you just briefly share what the agreement is and what, what happens with an adjustment in October, like what?
We, when we negotiated that last contract, there were a lot, it was a very long negotiation, and there were a lot of things that this city negotiated into that rate that other cities don't have. And it was very favorable, I think, to the city, and it provides, it really provides the city a lot of value. So, you know, the rate that you have here includes a lot of different things. It includes a franchise fee that goes directly to your general fund, it includes the street sweeping cost, it includes all of the city services that we do here, and I think those are even being memorialized, a little more of them in this new amendment. So when we first did the 1383 and the new contract, the city council worked in several elements that benefited the city and the rate, the citizens, more than just the curbside activities that happened, the aforementioned things that I said. So notwithstanding the disposal market change and the citrus event, we wouldn't be here asking for more, we would be content with the fluctuation that the annual rate increase brings. But understand, and you guys know this from your personal life and from raises that you get, when you negotiate a contract that has fixed indishes for the increases, they usually don't cover, you know, the increase. Like if you get a 3% one-year, costs usually go up more than that, but you kind of absorb it over time. But we can't absorb the extraordinary things in addition to, like if fuel goes up. Fuel fluctuates a lot, we don't come to you for fuel because that's part of the business that we do. If fuel went up $15 a gallon, we might have to talk about it. But those two events that happened were not foreseen, they're not in our usual business. And again, all of our cities had to take some kind of an increase over the disposal part of it, not the citrus part of it. Is there anything you want to add to that, City Manager?
Yeah, well, go ahead, and then I don't think that fully answered the question that you had, so.
If you want to add to that, but I, I have a.
So this is a 25-year franchise agreement.
25-year?
Mm-hmm. It has two or three five-year additions to, so at, at that time.
You can have up to two renewals.
Exactly, five-year periods. The, as Mr. Gifford said, the franchise fees and the benefits that the city realized were more significant, so some costs of the rates are associated with that, especially moving the street sweeping, which we didn't have all the funding for, into the, into the franchise obligation. In addition, the AB 1383 was in full effect. We were one of the first cities to actually have to adopt, but also pay for the diversion of organic waste for not just our commercial facilities, which had started, but also for households. And the other things that I think are significant about the franchise is that the city asked Athens to make a significant investment in what had really become pretty old and antiquated equipment. So we have all brand-new alternative fuel trucks.
So what you had before was they purchased from the previous person or it was city-owned?
Some of it was previous and some of it was owned by Athens, but it was older stock that would regularly break down. And you can't ask a company to make an investment in replacing very expensive equipment when they're in the last one or two years of their franchise agreement. So they're, they're just not going to make that reinvestment. That's universal, that's not just an Athens issue. They replaced all of the commercial bins, so you have brand-new bins. They replaced all of the residential bins. Before, we literally had somebody going around on almost a daily basis having to come with ones because wheels were breaking and lids were torn off or there was graffiti. So there was, there was a significant upfront investment that Athens made that we, we now enjoy, including a brand-new street sweeper. So that, that kind of summarizes the, the package that was put together. It did come at a cost because we were proud to say we had the, pretty much the lowest rates, I think, in the entire county, or maybe second to lowest, whereas the rates we have now are still in the bottom half, but are much more competitive with the number of our neighboring cities.
And then what was the adjustment? Like every year, there's an adjustment, what is?
So there's an agreed-upon set adjustment of just under 7% a year for the first seven years.
7% a year for seven years.
And then it goes.
That was to help pay for the new equipment, it was front-loaded on that. That was the reason that it was a higher increase, was the purchase of new equipment.
And then it goes to a CPI, and there's a, a base and a ceiling, you know, so that the CPI can't be too, too high or won't be too, too low.
Yeah.
So if anyone has questions, I have a little bit of a comment, so I don't know if it's appropriate for me to make a comment at this point.
Go for it.
So, and it might turn into a further question, but part of what I'm struggling with a little bit is, I went back and I had requested that the old, that the contract be included in the packet, but I think since the packet was over 600 pages, it was determined that the packet was too big. But I went back and I pulled the contract and I read Section 4.08.2, and, which is what the city attorney had read, but it says, you know, what it talks about is considering the increase, it says, "Not a usual business risk of the contractor." Part of what I'm struggling with on the second part of the request is that under the definition included of usual business risk, it says that part of usual business risk is changes in the market for recyclables. So unless someone else is reading this section differently, that's part of what I'm struggling with in terms of the, the second piece.
If I, if I could, Councilmember Crossway, I believe that's referring to the commodity side of recyclables, the marketing side when they are, you know, sold on the backend. So we're just disposing them somewhere, but we're, we're not making any money off the recyclables being sold to market.
So if, yeah, if the corrugated price on the market fluctuates from $200 to zero, we can't come to you and say, oh, by the way, we're not making any money picking up corrugated, we want more money. The tip fee fluctuation is not the market of the commodity.
But isn't the tip fee changing because of changes in the market to the commodity?
Not necessarily. It has to do also with the diversion levels and, and the law of what's recyclable, which includes organics too. So this isn't based on any market-driven, whatever companies do on the market end, this has to do with the tip fee that we pay that we don't control. We don't, we don't control that at all.
Is there a legal, Monica, is there a legal interpretation of that?
I mean, it's, this definition is not an, an all-inclusive definition, says usual business risk shall include, so there's some, the city can consider what might be other usual business risks. And changes in market for, in the market for recyclables, it sounds to me, one of the rules of construction is, you know, you, first you look at it on its face, and if that's not clear, then you can turn to the intent of the parties, and the intent of the parties, it sounds like it comes from an industry standard that frankly, I'm not an expert in.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, does not include, that's the, that's the key phrase. It doesn't say that it does not include this, it said it includes this, so.
But if you can reason that what they're requesting is, if the diversion of green waste elsewhere is a change in the market for recyclables, then that would fall under a usual business risk, and if it's a usual business risk, it would not support granting a rate increase.
Councilmember.
It seems to me that our rates are not tied to the tipping fees. That is the risk of the negotiation of the disposal company, and that would be part of a business risk.
The, the, the reason for those tipping fee increases were because of what Del Norte did with their, their facility and upgrading it, had nothing to do with the market or anything like that. It's just what they chart, like, we take it there one day, they put in new equipment, they did the same thing, they want to amortize the cost of that, so they raised their tip fee. It cost us more money to use that to give you your diversion. That's an unusual event that happens, but we had to deal with it. We wouldn't come to you, first off, our legal team wouldn't let us do it, but we wouldn't come to you with something that was, in our opinion, an interpretive way where we were trying to take advantage of something, or we have a thought, we're very thoughtful and long-term here. So as one of my owners say, you know, we don't want to make a quick dime, we'll make a slow nickel for over a long time, I think I said that last time I was here. So I just want you to realize that we, you know, we're restricted on where we can take these things, and we can take everything back to our place, but it's a little farther away, and a lot of the local places benefit the local businesses, but they can charge more for it, which may or may not be related to the market. In this particular case, it had to do with the upgrade they made.
Excuse my ignorance, because again, myself and councilwoman here were not on the council during these discussions, so I'm just curious to know, when we go through a process and negotiate this, do you remember how long it took for that process to get negotiated? Well, let's see.
It was a long time.
Really?
It was a very long time. I, I know it was well over a year.
We had to do two, I think, two one-year extensions of the expiration.
Of the previous company that had the agreement?
No, Athens was already here at that time.
Oh, they were here at the same time.
But it, yeah, so it was.
Were under a shorter contract?
There was a 10-year agreement that I think there was about three or four years left on when you guys assumed it.
And that was from Crown?
It had been actually from Recology.
It was from Crown to Recology to Athens in that 10-year period.
Okay, and then it took two years to get, negotiate a 25-year contract?
Correct.
And when it was put out to bid, I'm just curious, what was the timeframe that you gave people to, to bid on a project like?
So the council held a couple of workshops and determined to do a sole source negotiation.
What does that mean?
So what it means is, instead of putting it out on the street to bid, that we would start with a negotiation with the existing hauler. And if we felt that we could get a really good deal and that that deal was competitive, that we wouldn't put it out, that we would then do, you know, negotiate solely with, with Athens, and that's what occurred. They still were subject to Prop 218. Which required that the rates had to be communicated with the property owners or customers with an opportunity to protest if they were in objection. I didn't probably describe the Prop 218 process perfectly, but.
So the resident was able to vote on, on something like that?
Correct. And we did get some protests, as you might expect. I believe that count was maybe under 200 protests or something around that.
And then as part of the negotiation for this 25-year contract, what was a franchise fee that was given to the city?
My recollection is that our franchise fee and, and Rondi or Bruce might be able to help here, was, well, go ahead, pre versus post, what it was versus what it is now.
The, the current franchise fee is 18.75% on residential, that's gross revenue, and 14.75% on commercial and roll-off services, and those fees combined amount to approximately $1.2 million to the city annually.
So the city collects $1.2 million broken out between those percentages?
Correct.
That's roughly a doubling of what, what it was before.
And how do our franchise fee, how does it compare to the, the other cities in the county?
I'll, I'll ask Bruce to respond to that.
Thank you for the opportunity to return. I do have, you know, in listening to what's being said and also in regards to your prior question, Mayor, I can go over my one-page analysis, which has a number of points, which may serve as a counterpoint to what's having been said recently. But more importantly, I do have Kim with Solid Waste Solutions, who was the consultant who's been working with the city for a number of years, and she actually comprised, she works for four or five different cities here in the county, so she had a spreadsheet. So she put together the spreadsheet that has been used in your packets. There has been one minor change to it today, but it didn't have any consequential change in terms of how the city compares with other jurisdictions. But to get back to your question, part of that spreadsheet, it does show all of that information that you're asking, our franchise fee rates compared to other cities, what our rates are. So if you'd like. So if you'd like, we can let her in and she can go over those spreadsheets, that might be helpful as well, and then if I have an opportunity, I can go over some of the highlights of the analysis that was in the staff report that might provide a more well-rounded discussion.
I would appreciate that, because I, I want to understand the whole complexion.
Sure. So with that, I'll let him join.
She took it off mute.
Can you guys see that spreadsheet?
Yeah, why don't I pass out a, a version that'll be easier? Those are copies to give to Athens. If you want to take one of those.
I'll take one more.
The one that's stapled has the cumulative, it's very similar to what was in the packet. The difference, I think, is some updated comparisons.
If we have an extra one, maybe Wesley would want one. He took a picture of it.
Oh, sure.
Which one are we looking at first? The annual or the cumulative?
The one on the screen is the cumulative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Kim, I don't know if you had heard the mayor's question, but it related to the, how our franchise fee percentage compares with other jurisdictions.
Okay, so right now, you guys have a franchise fee in the residential and multifamily section, sectors at 9.25%, and in the commercial sector at 5.25%. The range is really all over the place. Fillmore has a 5% franchise fee, Moore Park has a 12% residential franchise fee, Ventura has a 7%, City of Ventura has a 7%. So they, they go up and down. There is also AB 939 fees that you collect, and that goes into a restricted fund for the implementation of your solid waste programs. And yours is 5%, which is pretty average for that area. Thousand Oaks has a 10% AB 939 fee. The additional fees that you have, that some cities do not have, is you have the 50 cent household hazardous waste, and you have a 4.5% stormwater quality fee. So those, those fees are on top of the base rate that is established by Athens. So when rate increases go up, all these fees go up as well. The franchise fee goes into the general fund, the AB 939 fees go into the restricted fund, and I'm not quite sure where the hazardous waste probably goes into the AB 939, and then you also have your stormwater, and I think that goes to, straight to public workers.
I would also point out, for the benefit of our newer council members, that a significant part of our discussions were to figure out how we could capture funds that would help us with our pavement program because of the impact that these heavy trucks every single week have on our neighborhoods. We determined that a, a road impact fee wouldn't be a viable addition, even though it exists in a lot of other states, because similar fees had been challenged in California, and they were still in court. And so rather than go that route, it was part of the reason that we increased the overall franchise fee, so that we could internally capture some of those funds, but put them back into our street management, our pavement management program, which we in fact have done the last two years, and intend to continue to do.
I believe, and correct me or clarify for me, we also intended to make sure that we were always within the, lower than the 50% cost countywide.
And there's language in the franchise, city attorney could read that, relating to a checkpoint that you wrote into the franchise that at, at 10 years, that there would be kind of a rate review study done.
But no guarantee, just a review?
Not a guaran-
Would have to renegotiate?
Well, a guarantee that a rate review would exist, but no guarantee that the rate would be.
We could bring it back down below the 50 if we were above, right?
That's my recollection, but I, I don't know if you can put your finger on that, or, or maybe Bruce can.
Yes, it says.
For, it has a option that you guys put in, where at that time, they look at the averages, they measure them, and if you're not pleased with where it falls, it would have a big latitude that we would have a meet and confer to try to adjust it. So there was a component in there to do that next step, not just do the survey and walk away.
I think we even set the parameters of what the survey would include, so there was agreement ahead of time, so there wouldn't be confusion or uncertainty.
Right, your consultant was very diligent in going over those things, so you're measuring more of the net cost than the gross cost. Because, again, if you're, if, if a city pays for street sweeping or has it part of their rate, those are two different things that affect you in a positive way, but you wouldn't use that method to judge against another city. You'd say, take that out, and what does the net look like, not the gross, but you're, the consultant and team did a good job putting that parameter in to have the check.
The quarantine piece of that, what is that percentage again?
3.1 something.
4.7% over two years, and it's a flat amount based on your current rate.
So every year be 4.7, and it goes away after two?
Yeah, yes, but it, it, it remains the same amount, so it's not a 4.7 on top of next year's rate. It's, it's, it remains a flat amount as of today, for the next two years.
And then the other piece of that is?
The disposal offset, yes.
What is that percent?
3.55%.
Roughly what, how much is that in, 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 just the 3.55, that, you said that was how much?
That was, if we were looking at the 64-gallon rate, I believe it was a dollar eight.
What would be the total, I'm just curious.
Let me see, I think I have that wrong. I think it was a dollar.
I wrote it somewhere.
Nope, that was on the 32. It's a dollar 20, so it's $2.79, it's for a 64-gallon customer per month.
But on average, what would be the total amount of the cost?
The, the total, that, that total that we're, yeah, for the.
Is there a way to know that?
Yes, I do. For the citrus quarantine, it is.
Not necessarily the citrus.
Oh.
The other fee. The 3.55.
Annual amount of roughly $250,000.
So around $250,000.
$257,000.
Okay.
Hey, Kim, can we have you mute? We're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you.
If I may, Mayor Chavez, Councilmember Cornejo, you, you brought up the rate increases at Del Norte potentially being, you know, regular business, you know, practice, and I, I'd just like to comment, the, the just incredibly extensive spike in those rates is what is, is unaccounted for and outside of our control. I think as Gary mentioned, and I mentioned in my comments, like, absolutely, we should be taking CPI increases and things like that into account, and not obviously come back to you, oh, they went up 3% this year, they went up 5%, you know, we're obviously not coming back to you on a annual basis, based on fuel and those types of things that we absolutely should be taking in to consideration in our, you know, contract with you. But these were, you know, I mean, 4,800% increase for recycling, and up to 70, 80% I believe it was, for some of the other waste streams at that. You know, the biggest impact being the recycling, but we do still have to take trash loads there, and there was a, I think, 70% increase in, you know, their trash rate too. So again, just an incredibly big rate increase that you can't possibly take into account as a hauler.
Bruce, is there things that you wanted to add? You or Kim? Some of the comparisons and.
Well, as far as the spreadsheet, Kim, it's been, I think done a great job. The one thing that I would, and I'll reference.
Speak into the mic.
So Kim's done a really good job of capturing all the diverse, you know, metrics involved for all the jurisdictions here in the county. The one item, since Athens doesn't seem to be interested in just the 3.55, so we can kind of remove one of the spreadsheets from consideration, in all or nothing. If you look at that, the bottom right-hand corner, where you talk about the, the net effect compared to other jurisdictions, so you're looking at a 3.46% and a 6.5% higher than the average of comparable countywide basic service rates, if you look at the residential and commercial rates. So I think that was a question that was asked, how do we compare? So we would be above the average. And if you have any, you know, more specific questions about rates, Kim, you know, I know she's on the line, but I'd, you know, be more than happy to answer other questions, again, going back to Mayor Chavez's original question. But I don't want to end this portion until you've had all your questions asked and answered.
You just said something about if we would adopt these increases as, as a bundle.
Yes.
We would be above average?
Yes, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, where in the, the very bottom, where it shows the red font, I believe it's on. Page two, so if you look at, okay, so, so it's at the top, the, both at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you'll see the rate increase compared in relation to the average.
I got it.
For Ventura County.
Mayor, if I could, and with, with all due respect, I, I actually tried to get some additional information from staff on how this number was built, because it's, I'd had our finance guy look at it, I, I really tried to build it out and figure out where even that $40 rate was coming from, and I, I wasn't sure, so I, I'm thinking, and maybe Kim can answer, I'm not sure that, because I couldn't, the notes in that green column, I didn't really understand, but I, maybe she was basing it on, because at one time, we had a proposal before the city of a one, one-year 9.4% increase on the citrus quarantine. So I'm not sure if that number reflects that proposal, which I'm thinking it does, but just so you know, we're not, we have not reviewed those numbers and are not in agreement here today on those numbers, that you, that would push you into the top 50%. Our numbers don't show that.
Were these numbers ever given to you?
Just in this, when the staff report came out.
Just, just when the.
Yeah. Yeah. So just for, just an example, that $40 number that I think that they're putting in year one, we have, if you, you know, looked at our rates that I proposed to you, have 38.81 that I think would be in that column, as far as I can tell what, what they're trying to do here.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Kim to.
Yeah.
Explain how she reached that. Kim, were you able to hear the conversation there?
Yes, I did. I did not calculate the cumulative portion of this. What I was calculating was, was, I tried to gather the best current information that I had. I didn't have all of the Athens information on the citrus quarantine and also the tipping fee increase. So that 40.68 may be a little bit high, but it, it's gonna, it could possibly drop you down to maybe a 10% increase overall. I'm not sure, Rondi, what you've got calculated as the overall increase. I'm looking at your PowerPoint.
Yeah, I, I, I think that 38 would be below the 50th percentile, and if you look at even current rates, you know, they're very much, that's what most cities are charging currently. So there, there's just a discrepancy there.
And then we're honoring the rates that are in our form, the 38, not the 40, so it's below the 50th percentile still.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't, I did not calculate that portion of it, Mr. Singer, I apologize. So what we presented was the current rates, and if you look at some of the local cities, the reason their percentages are, appear so high is because they didn't have 65-gallon rates the prior year. They're new with new contracts, so that's where those come in, and they, they kind of look exorbitant, but we're trying to balance them out as we go forward with new, new agreements.
Ms. Crossway.
Well, I don't know if you have something else, Councilmember Cornejo?
Mine was just a quick point, that I noticed that more than half of our users use the large bins anyway, so we should be looking at those larger, the higher end, as far as how it will affect our constituents.
Well, the problem there is that not every city has the, the larger size, and so that's why we used the one that all the cities have. I do understand what you're saying, and that's, part of the final decision has to take into consideration that fact. For the comparisons, that's why the others were used. But I guess what I'm wondering is, just sort of a temperature check of the council, it's after 10 o'clock, we still have two more items, and we have to go back into closed session, so I'm just wondering sort of how we're all feeling in terms of getting to a decision? Do we need to have a studies, another session on this? Do we need to have the finance committee look at it? I'm just sort of wondering, you know, where you're all at.
I'll share my frustration right now, is that the numbers aren't accurate. And so for me to make a decision, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page in regards to numbers. So we've been, you've been in this negotiation for a year, and the numbers that are being presented to us are not accurate. So I, I, I think we wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page, so have a meeting and get this, get the most accurate information to us, so we can really make an informed decision. Yes.
May I ask for a consideration? If we, we've presented tonight, evidence and testimony, and with the writings to you, accurate numbers, and I'm not saying that yours aren't accurate, but ours are accurate, and we were pretty diligent with it. What I would ask you to consider is if the numbers that we turned in are accurate, and they're less than that, and they, they fall into all the parameters that you have, could you empower the city manager to move forward with it if the numbers that we presented to you for those rates were what we said they were? And, I mean, that's, that's very clear that. And, I mean, that's, that's very clear that, I mean, it benefits you a couple bucks a home even, it's less than the numbers that were presented to you.
Councilmember.
Well, I think that there's two questions, though, because there's the, you know, do our numbers match their numbers, and, you know, there, are they off by a dollar or fifty cents, or, you know, there's that. There's also sort of the fundamental question of whether or not the council feels that the request meets the provisions of the contract to necessitate an approval of an increase, which is, then you negotiate whether or not, what, you try to figure out what the final rates sheet is, because then you're gonna have to have a 218, and you move forward down that route. I think, for me, the fundamental first question is whether or not the two requests for the recycling and for the citrus quarantine, whether or not the council feels that those fall under, because they don't fall under the things that require the increase, they potentially fall under the provision for us to consider the increase. So, do we feel that they meet, you know, that they're beyond standard business risk, and that they meet the extraordinary circumstances definition? Because if we feel that they do, then you negotiate over making sure that everybody's in agreement on the numbers. If the council doesn't feel that they do, then that's a potential different conversation, unless I'm misunderstanding the item before us.
I think it would be helpful, would you pull up the slide where you break down that section of the agreement, so council can visualize the prongs? Even though the slide is not verbatim quoting our agreement, at least you'll have the concepts of what council must consider.
And who makes that call? Do we, as a collective body, make that call, or does the law, the legal interpretation provide us guidance whether that's justifiable or not?
You'll have to make findings, you'll have to support the different prongs that you'll see under the standard. Okay. So, so, yes, if we find that one of the events either, and I think that we're separating the rate requests between the recovery of costs due to the gate prices increasing, and that's a three-point-five-five percent annual increase to recover those costs, so that's, you want to look, the event would be one, the gate cost increase, so we'll start there, looking at the three-point-five-five percent increase request. So, has, did that event occur? Yes. Was it reasonably foreseeable? Athens is arguing no. That's for you to decide. Is it outside, and here, these first two bullet points should be or, so if they can show either one, then you can move on to the third test, which asks, was that gate price increase a usual business risk? And if it was not, then... So many double negatives. If it was, if you consider it a usual business risk, then you can, you have grounds to reject the request.
Now, I'm not in this business, right? So, I try to figure out what, what does staff recommendations have, are there staff recommendations on this, in terms of the experts? What do the subject matter experts say about the interpretation of these, of this request?
Well, I also wonder if Kimberly has any input, given that she works with, in this industry all the time. I mean, I'm not saying that you, you know, our staff doesn't, but since that is her main area of expertise, I don't know if she also has something, if she, I mean, she may not, but whether or not she has anything to weigh in on whether or not it...
Sure.
This is follows under usual business risk, not foreseeable conditions, and maybe she doesn't, but I'm just, I'm also curious on that.
I can add to that, if you'd like, Bruce.
If you'd like to begin with me, and then she can...
Yeah, you're the city staff member, so we'll start with you, sir.
So, I'll just refer to the analysis page of the staff report, and I'll just kind of highlight a few of the issues that were in there that kind of relate to what we're talking about here. So, in terms of the contractual standard, you, as an elected body, have a hundred percent discretion as to whether you're going to increase any rate, or just flat-out reject both of the rate requests. There are two requirements that would, that would allow you to, or I guess, direct you to approve those. One is a city-directed change of destination of collected waste, so in other words, flow control. An example of that would be, say, the city built a new material recovery facility, and we wanted to offset the cost of infrastructure and building it, and we told Athens, hey, Athens, you can't take it to your facility where you have a relationship, you need to take it to this facility to put material in there and allow us to get a payback. So, at that point, we've taken control, and that would allow them to say, hey, wait a minute, this, we, you know, we deserve a rate increase. That didn't occur. The second example would be a change in state law having a direct and adverse impact on the collection cost, a regulation state law. That didn't occur. So, the fact that neither one of those two examples or two requirements were not met, you have a hundred percent discretion. You know, and then there were some points that I put in there that were, you know, somewhat, I'll say philosophical, and you, as a group, have already kind of touched upon those to some extent. You know, Athens, when they, before my time here, but not before my time in the solid waste industry here in the county, Athens, when they got the business here, they were a LA firm, that's where their infrastructure is, that's where their economies of scale are, that's where their, you know, all their efficiencies are gained. Coming out here was, you know, a bold risk, the principals knew that, they don't have any, they're in a very competitive environment, they didn't have any peers here that were welcoming them to the community, they don't have any processing facilities, they don't have any disposal facilities here, so it was a risk, it was a known risk. And I think a lot of what has been happening in the discussion here, in terms of why are they asking for these, I think is exemplify the inherent risk of when you move from your territory as a player with your infrastructure to a new territory where you don't have any infrastructure. The solid waste industry is very much transportation-oriented. Your efficiencies, your control of cost is all relative to the material you're picking up, and then how far do you have to take it, transport it to a disposal facility or to a processing facility? Those don't, those aren't benefiting Athens. So, the general, you know, the question from a philosophical standpoint is, should the ratepayers of this community have to assume a higher burden in rates to allow them to be whole in a business strategy that was inherently risky? Similar to that, are these truly, and again, philosophical question, are these truly extraordinary rates, or are these unforeseen or unanticipated business expenses? You know, Athens is a private company, as a private company, you invest, there's no guarantee of profitability, there's no guarantee, I mean, the recycling market, the waste market, especially the recycling market, recycling's a commodity, as you know, commodities fluctuate dramatically, they're tied to the economy, they're tied to multiple issues beyond any company's control, which Gary has mentioned, but that's the inherent risk you take of being in that business. So, is it up to the residents of this community, who are already burdening a much higher increase, is it up to them to absorb that, to offset lost revenue for Athens, especially going back to 2023? These are just, you know, again, items of consideration. It's like, you know, it's your discretion to determine that, there's no requirement to vote yes. I'll also say that, in terms of the green waste processing, when SB 1383 came out, EJ Harrison, which is the largest waste collection company in the county, they made a decision to pick up organic material in a certain manner, separate your food waste, put it in your green waste container, but when it got to the green waste processing facility, the organic waste could be separated, and then the green waste could be processed as normal green waste. Athens principles made a different decision, let's make it easier, I presume, for the residents and for the businesses, combine it all. Well, the problem is, when you combine it all, you've now eliminated the opportunity to use most, if not actually all, green waste processing facilities here, because it takes a special permit to handle food waste in your organic waste. We've touched upon the Limonara Agrarman's business at Limonara. Once that business comes online, if it's next year or the year after, we don't know, but it's been in, works now for the better part of probably ten years, it'll be coming in soon, then that will allow this, you know, the method that Athens has selected to combine their organic waste with the green waste, then now they have an outlet where they can take that, and, you know, the cost impacts are going to disappear. You know, the one thing that I also will add is that Athens does provide service for three different jurisdictions here, the county, unincorporated area, Thousand Oaks, and Santa Paula. Of the three, they've only requested a rate increase from one, and that's the city. In the discussion with them, they have described why, and it's reasonable, it has to do with the location, again, transportation, distance equals cost, so the fact that we're further away from their desired processing facilities, that has an impact, and so one can say that's reasonable.
And then, Kim, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, if that's okay.
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes.
So, with what Bruce was talking about relative to transportation, Del Norte's seventeen miles from City Hall in Santa Paula, and Crown is thirty-five miles, so they doubled their travel time and their mileage there. So, that's what Bruce is talking about. But I just have a quick summary on the increase. First of all, tolling's rates for disposal, because it's a landfill, are set by the sanitation district. Gold Coast, that's owned by EJ Harrison, is set by the County of Antura every year, and Oxnard sets their own rates. So, as Oxnard increases or changes out equipment, they have the ability to change their rates, as Mr. Clifford explained. But here's the difference in your contract and other area contracts. Other area contract increases are CPI, and they're typically maxed at three or four percent, and then you can apply for operational cost increases, and you have to prove your cost increases. So, you have to prove your landfill increase, to prove your recycling increase, you have to prove your organics increase, and it's done through tonnages and all the way through. Your contract has six-point-nine percent increase for seven years, just flat. That's in your contract. Most of these agreements, so, without looking at the tipping fee in the citrus right now, most of the other agreements around you had four and five percent increases this past year. You have six-point-nine that'll hit in October, and on top of the six-point-nine, they want to add three-point-five-five and four-point-seven. So, that's what I see as the difference. They've been granted a base rate increase higher in the contract from the get-go.
Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he can add, then I have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The previously negotiated contract points don't have anything to do with our request tonight. That's six-point-nine over those years, and the other things that happened were what preserved your low rate that you have today. Instead of it going up with new trucks and all of the services, and again, you get a bunch more services, I'm hoping that's clear, and that the city manager explains that to you, that your contract is different in the amount of services that you get, and the revenue that you get from that. So, what I want to tell you is, all of those six-point-nines aren't what we're here for tonight. We're here for tonight, it's simple to me, we were going to Del Norte, and we were paying A, and now we're going to Del Norte, and they're, and they're charging us B. It doesn't have to do with anything that we did different, they raised the rate, I'm gonna make the, I'm thinking seventy percent. That's not in our control, nothing that we can do about it, we take it there, and that benefits everybody here, it has nothing to do with anything else. The citrus thing is the same, the citrus quarantine is the same thing, but what we did, what we did is still provided the service, we couldn't take it anywhere here. And our green waste program, and I want to, I hope you understand this, is much more innovative than people putting it in bags. The reason the companies here had to put it in bags is because nobody was permitted to do that. We are. So, we gave you a program, which is actually what the state wants you to do, and combine the two together, and compost them, they don't want bags in it. You have to put it in bags if you don't have the correct facilities to separate it. Now, when the new facility comes up that you're talking about, it's not going to be a lower rate, it's going to be even a higher rate. That's, it's not, that rate, nobody has established it yet, but it's going to be a higher rate, because it's going to have the equipment that will allow them to process it without a bag. I hope that's clear to you. So, the two things that we're here for tonight is, A, the real cost of the citrus quarantine that we're asking you to reimburse us for, because that was a real cost that we proved to you that we had. The secondary thing is the change in the processing of the organics and the recycling at what we did at Del Norte, because they had a significant increase that was unforeseen, that is not an industry standard, or anything like that, which that section of the contract allows us to ask you for, and this city council, as Councilmember Crosswhite said, has the decision they can make, yes, we believe that you met that criteria, and then we can move forward with it, or no, that we don't think you did. But I've been in this industry for a long time, and I've been a city employee, and I ran cities, I'm telling you that I wouldn't be here tonight if I thought this was even close to not being something that wouldn't be the right thing to do. I don't think your residents are being burdened or paying for any service they're not getting, we're standing by our diversion, we're standing by what we said. And the other thing that residents can do, too, which we find in many cities, is they can always downsize their ninety-six to a sixty-four and get more recycling. You know, they can do things that mitigate their bill in a positive manner, and we're here to help them do that, too. So, I just want to try to help illuminate, you know, it's, in my opinion, and the city manager can address that, too, the six-point-nine and those things, that had to do with a whole different set of criteria, notwithstanding anything tonight, that's already there. So, to say that six-point-nine should cover everything that was unforeseen, I don't think that's even an argument that I could even support, just because they're different things. If Del Norte didn't raise their rate extraordinarily, we wouldn't be here. And if I could take it somewhere else, it would give me the diversion or make it right for us, I would do that, but we can't. So, I just wanted to add that, I hope that's helpful, and again, I'm here if you have any questions about that.
Councilmember Crosswhite?
I'm just, I guess I'm still struggling to see how some of this isn't usual business risk. I could see how you could potentially argument, argue with the citrus quarantine, that that was obviously, no one thought that that was, that was coming. that that was obviously, no one thought that that was, that was coming, other than, I suppose you could say, well, you got citrus at mine, at some point you might get a bug, but, but I just, I'm, I'm really struggling with the, the other, with the, with the tipping fee and, and, yeah, so.
Real quick, Ronny, could you just share about the senior discount? What's the parameter for that? I'm curious.
Of, of course, yes, thank you, Mayor. And, and if, if I could, and I, I think city attorney read it earlier, just first, Mr. Mayor, I'd address what is actually in the contract relating to the language. It, it says, "Usual business risks shall include routine changes in the costs of providing services." I don't know how a 4,800% increase and a, in recycling rate and a 70% increase in just the few loads we take for trash, but is considered routine. I don't know how that is in the spirit of this language in the contract, because to me, that is certainly not a routine change in the cost of our operations. Your, the senior discount is 10% for any seniors 65 and over. They can call our office, come in and talk to Urelly in the Public Works Building and apply for that discount.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. This is just a follow-up question. You know, this is a, a extremely difficult decision for this council to make, just based on our, you know, economic status of our city. But if they were to approve either one or two of the proposed rates, and the city manager touched upon this a little bit, but could you please, just for the, for the public, what would be the Prop 218 process from here forward? And ultimately, if it was voted for or against, what would happen after that?
I think in the staff report, it says that we would cover the cost of the 218 process for you. The citizens get an opportunity to vote on that, and if the votes come in to say, no, we don't want the rate increase, then, then we don't, it's not awarded. So we, we, we proposed in our agreement to give you a draft amendment to, to help save money and time with the attorney, to cover the cost of the Prop 218 hearing, and then to go through that process with you. And so we would be here again with those numbers. And I believe last time it was less than 100, but that's just my, my take on that. But the citizens do have an opportunity to opine, and then we would go out and visit and talk to them also.
And if the, if it was unfavorable for Athens, is there an appeal that you have or is that it?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's not what the staff report says.
Oh, is there?
Correct. The staff report says that they have the right within 30 days to request the city negotiate in good faith regarding reductions in programs, services, or fees to compensate for any negative impacts from the unapproved rate.
Yes, but that wouldn't change, that wouldn't change the rate to the rate payer. That would be, we would negotiate.
Right, but I'm just, but just, the question was, is there, kind of like, could you just put it out there and see what happens? And there are consequences to that. So I just want to make sure that the council understands.
Not to the rate payer, but to the operation, potentially. If, but you may say no, and then we would have to walk away. I've been involved with those and, and you may say no.
Well, Athens would have the right to ask for more meet and confering and negotiating.
Yes, that's the extent of it.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to ask ourselves a fundamental question, right? Does it fit the definition? Let's start with that, no?
So we're looking at this moment, the request for the 3.55% increase to cover the tipping fee, the tipping fees, right? The Del Norte, that's what you call it?
The extraordinary increase on the tipping fee that we believe is not routine, that it's extraordinary because of those percentages are so high.
And we, my understanding is that council is leaning towards finding that, that increase is both not reasonably foreseeable, so that could tick that box, and then you jump, but you also have to find that it's not a usual business risk. So if you say this increase is a usual business risk, you make that finding, then you have discretion to deny the request for 3.55. And then we can turn to the, what was the other one?
Quarantine.
The quarantine, 4.7% for two years.
How do you want to do this? Just each go individually and say what our interpretation is of that? Yes, it's not reasonable, reasonably foreseeable.
Mr. Mayor, in accordance with your council procedural guidelines, if the council is going to now deliberate, I would recommend you ask Athens to sit down and not be part of your deliberations.
Okay. We have a seat, sir, thank you. Are we at the point where we're, we're ready to decide this, or are there additional inquiries? It's not a reasonable foreseeable?
I have one question.
Still wording is so awful.
And we determined that either action, I know that, that Athens has requested that they all, it's either you take it all or not, but, but did we determine that either action would require a 218? Like, would a temporary two-year?
Correct.
Would also require a 218?
Really, that any, any increase would require that.
But they're going to cover the cost?
Yes.
And we're going to split it up between those two, right? Or are we just going to decide it as a bundle?
The quarant, the quarantine. Well, I think the standard, the test that the city attorney is pointing out, you should apply to both factors.
Well, may, may I ask a question? Is the request that the city approve both or neither? That's what I'm not.
The request is that the city request, approve both. If you want to take them individually, you can, but we made certain commitments based on getting a extraordinary rate increase for the disposal changes, which I believe were about 70%, which we don't think is routine, and on the, the quarantine, which again is, it was phenomenally different and not routine. They're both, none of those were routine events. So what we're asking, based on all the things that we said, where we would fund the Prop 218, and all the things that we would do to indemnify the city from that stuff, would be that if you voted in the affirmative for both of those things. If you don't, then that would change, obviously, the proposal we made to the city. But if you could find in, in the majority to support those two things and move it forward, then we could do the Prop 218, and we can move forward with it and then see what the Prop 218 vote tells us. But, and then we would cover the, all those costs and, and the, the cost of preparing a first draft of an amendment for you, which is also considerable.
So, yeah. To clarify then, does that mean if we split them, that you will not cover the cost of the 218?
We would have to negotiate that. It, it just, we.
Then we'd be out for a vote tonight anyway, then, so.
No, I mean, we would, we would, we would negotiate that. But I mean, again, when you go down those findings and you look at the language of the contract, you're going to say, you know, was it reasonably foreseeable or was it outside our control? And my argument would be yes, and then you would deliberate that. And then is it not a usual, is it a, not a usual business, business risk? And when the contract defines that, the contract says, "These things are unusual business risks, and these things are considered routine." And these two items, in our legal and ethical opinion, do not fall as a usual business risk. If they did, I wouldn't be here. If they went up 3% or 4% or whatever, you know, if it was something small, then we would, we would use the normal CPI, not the 6.9, because that 6.9 covered a bunch of other stuff. The normal annual rate increase we'd use for that. So I, I would just ask again, if you, that one language about what is routine and what is unforeseeable, it to me is.
So I, I think there's some misunderstanding of what the term usual business risk is. So in the agreement, usual business risk is quoted, and it says it shall include routine changes in the costs of providing services. So that's one, so it's going to include, but not only include, routine changes in the costs of providing services. It doesn't define what those routine changes are. That's what council can decide is a routine change. Second, it also includes, it could include external economic conditions existing in the normal course of business, and it could also include changes in the market for recyclables. So those are examples that this definition gives of what is a usual business risk.
What was the reason why it went up so high with Del Norte? What was their justification?
Del Norte made an investment in their building and put in new equipment and new processing and all that thing, and they had a significant rate increase to everyone who uses that facility.
Okay.
Because another thing that I'm concerned about, just as we've been having this conversation, is it, it was mentioned that, oh, well, the operation out here with the green waste is probably going to be more expensive. So then is that going to be another unforeseeable, even though it's been mentioned here tonight, another unforeseeable, you know, not within the call, control of the contact tractor definition, so we're going to be back here in another couple of years having this conversation all over again? So I guess I.
I can answer that. I can tell you that it wouldn't be. I can make that commitment to you tonight because we have an outlet for it. Now, we, we, we've mitigated that outlet for it, and it's okay. So if that rate is higher, we won't use it. If that rate is competitive to what we're doing, we will, but it won't be lower. And, and I'm on tape tonight, I'm telling you tonight I wouldn't come back to you when that facility opens up and says, oh, I want a rate increase to use that, because we, we currently have an outlet for that.
May, may I just add and make a, a addition to a statement made earlier about the contractor's obligations to pay for proposition 218? Section 410, point 10 of the agreement says the city may, in it, if it deems it necessary or advisable, the city may subject any proposed adjustment to the maximum service rate to majority protests or similar proceeding under Prop 218. The costs of the mailings shall be paid by the contractor. So the minimum they'll pay for the mailings.
So if I, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Burlesch.
The recommendation was any rate, this is the staff recommendation, any rate increase, whether it was both or either or, any rate increase, in speaking with Monica, would necess, necessitate a 218 process. The staff before requested that Athens would pay for, I mean, I, I believe someone maybe be confused in thinking it was negotiable. That wasn't the staff recommendation. Any rate increase that would require a Prop 218 process would be borne by Athens. And secondly, and this is again just 40 years of experience in solid waste industry, in terms of reasonable cost, I, I can tell you that in the waste and recycling industry, what happened in Del Norte is very common. We don't have to go back much farther than five or six years ago, when China, which was the largest destination for recyclables off the west coast of the US, passed a law saying, they just stopped. They said, we're going to, we're not going to accept any waste material, recyclable or other into our country. We're not going to be the dumping ground. Overnight, companies, recycling businesses went out of business. Companies started renting warehouses and filling warehouses full up with corrugated and, and paper because they had no market for it, or the market price was so depressed because of the lack of demand. So that was much more consequential than what we're talking about here. So the recycling market for paper recycling is, is probably worse than pork bellies. It fluctuates, it's risky. Anyone who's been in this business for more than a few years, certainly 10 years, or certainly probably the combined years that, that Mr. Clifford and I have been in, have seen multiple examples. Every economic downturn, recession, depression, drops the value of recyclables and companies go out of business. The large ones exist, they continue to survive, but the smaller, medium-sized ones, they, they disappear. So I, I think that, I just want to provide that as a, you know, my sentiment about what, what is deemed a reasonable or unforeseeable, I, it's, I don't see anything here, as someone who's been in the business for 40 years, I, I don't see this as an unusual business risk for this industry.
Mr. Mayor, can I just respond very quickly? That's why there's an exemption in the contract. Sure. For the market rate. We're, we're not talking about the market rate during the China sword, when you're taking something to China. We have no impact on the market rate, and we're not here about the market rate of a recyclable. We're here because a facility that we go to changed the rate, had nothing to do with the recyclable market or anything like that. It had, and there's an exemption for what the, the Public Works is talking about, about market rate. This is about the facility that we go to and the change in the tip fee, which we have no control over. We're not holding you accountable for the market rate of anything with, which fluctuates all the time. We're not holding you guys accountable or changing any rate as a, as a result of what the China sword did or anybody did, which the contract wouldn't allow us to do anyways, correct? Doesn't, it, it has a very specific thing about the market rate of a commodity.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give a little clarification?
Sure.
The comment that, that he made, the speaker before is, he said, "Is not an unusual business risk." So how does that differ from is not a usual business risk? Or is it like a double legged, one and the same? I mean, the comment that he just made is, "Is not an unusual business risk."
So, so the difference you're asking, what's the difference between a usual business risk and not an unusual?
Is not an unusual.
For all intents and purposes, it's probably the same, but in this industry, I would say that if you're in this industry long enough and you're functioning as a business long enough, this is a, a usual business risk. That's my contention.
Okay, I think we need to, to just set the parameters. You wanted to say something, Councilmember Ornelis?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, this that's being talked about, not usual, is for the recycling that went from zero to, what was it?
Forty.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, yes.
Your tipping fee.
So it going from zero to 48 is not unusual? I'm not, I'm just asking.
It is not usual.
It's not usual, right? That's a pretty big jump from zero to 48. And I know nothing about this industry, I just know that I like, my trash picked up?
No one puts a business together and says, we're doing it at zero and now the next day it's at 48. That is not usual, that is unusual.
Right. I'm just asking because I lack any knowledge of this industry. Like I said, as a customer, I appreciate my trash being picked up, but I'm trying to understand what's been going back and forth, usual or not. And zero to 48 is pretty intense.
That is absolutely, that's.
Anything, and to me, it wouldn't seem usual business risk because what would the flip side of that be? Then you'd charge us for something you're paying zero for just in case it goes up?
Yeah, then we would be here if, if they lowered their rate. That wouldn't make sense, at least to us, and I'm in the business of providing the service. So I can just tell you, and with multiple cities and multiple counties. And the two requests, so there's a lot of different talk, the, the, the two requests that we're asking for, in our opinion, I mean, it is, they are, they are not usual business risk, if you ask yourself. I think we fall under all three of those for both things. They're not, they weren't foreseeable, it's outside of our control, we begged them not to do it, and it's not a usual risk. If it was a usual risk, I wouldn't be here. I absolutely wouldn't be here. Exactly, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to deliberate or we want any additional information? I have a chart. What do you feel if we just go and ask these questions and just go around and see where everyone falls? And I'm going to. And I'm going to separate the disposal tied to the tipping fees on one, and then the second one would be the quarantine, would be the second, right? So the first question is the disposal. Is the disposal tipping not reasonable? So you would say yes?
Reasonably foreseeable.
Not reasonably foreseeable, correct?
Yeah.
Do you want to just do a straw poll? Just to try to get the numbers?
Not reasonably foreseeable, so if we say yes, we mean we agree with that statement.
Correct. A yes would mean you don't think this is something that's reasonably foreseeable, that they have control over, on the first one. Is that a yes? Yeah.
Hold on. Can we start with the last one? Because the way that it's worded in the contract, it says it's not A or B, and it's not C. So there's an and in between the first two and the last one. So depending on you, how you determine the last one, the first two may or may not matter, is whether or not it's a usual business risk.
Do you want to start with the quarantine question?
No, I'm just...
The last question.
Well, no, I'm just, but I'm just saying, I think we need to start with the last question because if the answer to the last question is no, you don't, it doesn't matter what you, how you answer the first two.
Okay, great. Are we all in agreement that if we answer that question, that sets a decision?
I mean, I suppose it's up to the council's discretion to do whatever, but the way that I'm reading this, there's an and.
So it's not the usual business risk.
On the issue of disposal, is it not the usual business risk? So yes would be, you agree that it's not the usual business risk, correct?
Gosh.
Yes, I know. It's the way that it's worded.
All right.
Should we just ask the question, is it a business risk?
Yes.
Yes, correct. Is this a usual, do you consider this a usual business risk?
Is this a usual business risk?
What's the hell?
Is this part of routine business to get a disposal increase from Del Norte?
Zero to forty-eight.
Okay.
That's usual. Can we clarify, zero to forty-eight? It's not like they didn't pay anything, and suddenly they're paying forty-eight. What were they paying, and then whatever they're paying went up forty-eight percent?
No, it was zero.
We were paying zero.
Zero?
Yes. We were, that's what, it's extraordinary. It's not usual. It's, we were paying zero dollars per ton.
Yeah.
Now we're paying forty, I'll round it up, forty-five dollars per ton.
Per ton.
And a truck holds 10 tons of, you know, six to 10 tons of that waste. And it's, again, respectfully, something going from zero to forty-five in this industry overnight is not usual. It is absolutely not usual.
It's not, it's not percentages.
Well, percentages is four thousand. It's ridiculous to give that percentage number. So that's why we're using dollars on that. But respectfully, if you're saying, is it a usual business risk for a facility to go from zero to forty-five, the answer is, in my opinion, no. It's not, it is not a usual business risk in that scenario, which is why it's spelled out in our request.
I don't think that's a usual business risk.
All right. Yes. Help me.
Okay. This is coming from someone who's owned a business, who's gone up and down, and you go with whatever happens, and it is what it is, and you deal with it, and you figure it out. And then the next year, something better happens, and you save the next year. But if, to me, I just feel that that, I feel that that is part of the risk. My gut is saying that it's part of the risk of that business. It's, I'm sorry, but I don't feel our ratepayers need to pay that because we signed a 25-year contract, considering the fact that things are going to go like this, up and down, and up and down, and up and down, and we have something sure that our ratepayers can count on. And if, you know, this could go on how many times between now and 25 years? So there's a certain amount of risk that's already built into those numbers. And I think that good business people include that in their plan. I'll reserve something separate for that unique thing to our community with the citrus. That's different, and I do consider that different. But I think that the cost of doing business, lamentably to a good business partner, that I am very uncomfortable, and I'm sorry for that this happens, but I don't want to put it on the ratepayers. And so I, because I do feel that in general, it's part of the risk that they take in this business.
So I'm just going to throw this out. I have a question. If we believe it's not a usual business risk, right, do we have the flexibility to decide if it's $257,000 that we can take that from the franchise fee and avoid the burden on the taxpayer? Do we have that authority to do that?
In short, in short, yes. The franchise itself is a negotiation with the hauler, so we would have to, you know, I don't think we would solve that tonight.
And I'm only saying that as an alternative right now, as an option, because there was an argument made that we increased our franchise fees to cover the cost of our streets, right? And now we have an influx to cover streets, so we're being creative about ensuring we don't burden the ratepayer. Because they're going to get a burden already based on existing contract in October, right? So it's just a matter of, hold on a second.
Is the 250,000 the cost, just to clarify, of the citrus?
That is the cost according to this, of the...
The tipping fee?
The tipping fee.
Tipping fee?
Correct.
It's the disposal. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
And then does, if that goes up, does it compound as our rates go up percentage-wise?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to end up being more and more and more every year?
The effect will, the percent won't compound, but the effect to the rates will be higher over time.
Right. Okay.
No, it wouldn't be something that we, this would be like a one-time...
I thought this was a one-time thing.
No.
So can we, can you clarify that, sir?
I can clarify that for you. Ms. Guthrie said one time, but what was meant by that is it's a one-time adjustment that's in perpetuity.
Forever.
Yeah.
So it'd be something that we would concede on at this moment in time, potentially. However, the reality is that it's just a one-time...
A permanent adjustment because, because there's no expectation that Oxnard is going to suddenly lower and drop back down their tipping fee.
Or what the fee would be when Agromin comes in.
Well, that's, it's somewhat different because it's two different...
Organics.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just, I just threw that out.
Yeah.
Consideration.
You've heard from one councilperson. Are you going to proceed then to hear from the others in your tally?
Oh, having you started.
You didn't capture her vote.
So we're saying, is this an unusual business risk on the disposable?
I think it is not unusual.
Okay.
Or it is a usual. How are you, how are you taking the tally? I think it's a usual business expense, a usual business risk.
So this is a usual business risk? You think it's a yes?
If you're taking it as assuming it's an usual risk, yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I think it's a usual business risk.
It's a usual business risk?
Is your mic on?
Okay.
And mine was not good. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm just going to...
With all due respect, I also feel that this is part of usual business risk.
Okay.
I don't think going from zero to forty-eight is usual, so I wouldn't agree.
Okay. I don't think it's usual. It's zero to, so it's three to two. On that question for the first section, now, the quarantine, right? And we haven't come up with solutions yet. We're just trying to figure out where we fall. Do you think it's a usual business risk, the quarantine? So we'll start this way, since we ended with...
I do not think it's a usual business risk.
Okay.
Sorry.
Carlos?
I do not think.
Do not? So that's a no. The citrus, just the citrus piece?
Yeah, it's unforeseeable, so I think it's an unusual business risk.
Okay. That's a no. Leslie?
I also feel it's an, I agree. Again, I think that's something that's very unique to this in...
The citrus capital of the world.
The citrus, yeah. Yeah. And I think it is not a usual business risk. Yeah.
Okay. Jenny? The citrus, just the citrus quarantine.
I mean, I think this is the harder question, and I feel like we're not going to 100% get to finality on this tonight. So part of my question is, where are we going from here?
Provide direction to the city manager to figure out what alternative options would be, which could include essentially the franchise fee?
Would you agree that it's not a usual business risk, for the sake of the tally here?
I don't know.
How would you think it would be? Like, how could that be something that anybody could foresee as a problem, or the extent of what it would cost?
I think the bigger challenge for me is I went through the, I mean, if you want to talk about things that are unusual, we have the highest increases, the highest max increase in the county, right? Most people, it's 4% CPI or 4% max. So if the CPI is 10%, the increase is still only 4%. Our increases, the max is 7%. The first six years, we have large increases built in. So I guess part of what, I mean, when you get down to what's the, what's usual or unusual or like...
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, it's our ratepayers that pay it.
Right. I pay, we all do, but that 6.9% was agreed to, and it had reasons for it.
Right.
Right?
But now we're asking for additional on top of that.
Right. But there's a reason being given for it, so I'm trying to understand...
It's out of the control.
Yeah. Where, where is it that there's a difficulty in saying it's not a usual or it is a usual? Because it's, they're very separate things, is my understanding. So the citrus quarantine is very different than the 6.9% for getting all the new things we got with the contract. I wasn't part of the acceptance or approval of it, but I'm looking at it as they should be. They're two separate things.
Mayor? And part of what they're asking for is for us to reimburse them for past expenses. That's part of what I'm struggling with because they've already said that the, they've resolved the issue. So we're being asked to reimburse them in this future rate for 2023 and 2024 costs.
Right. But to be fair, they said that they've been in talks with the city for over a year to try and figure out...
Well, since November of 2024, so not quite a year.
Okay. Okay.
To be fair, though, the quarantine issue was brought to our attention...
Twenty-three.
Well before that.
Yeah.
And Athens was trying to work it out, look at the impacts. It took them some time, and they started warning us that they were going to be coming to us well before that.
I mean, so does the city feel, I mean, because again, this is not our area of expertise. Does the city feel that the citrus quarantine is an unusual business risk?
Part of the reason we asked to, during all the negotiations for six months, asked to look at these things separately is because we felt that the test that's before you might be different. And then we made the mistake of having a recommendation that allowed you to not just weigh in on both of those things, but to actually choose one and not the other, which, as you've heard tonight, isn't the preference of Athens. But in terms of the test, if you're asking whether staff believes that that is, in fact, unusual and unforeseeable, I think staff would say yes. It's absolutely unforeseeable. It's out of their control. It's highly unusual. You wouldn't have a quarantine in a concrete jungle down south because you don't have citrus all around you.
The orange has got COVID.
And it hopefully is short-lived, so it had a limited lifespan, but...
Well, I'm going to vote that it's not usual. The fact that the state had to make that determination in 2023, you know, it's not something that was normal. So it's four. It's not a real vote, so, right, we haven't got to that point, so I'll just leave it at four no's and that, right? So then on the disposal, the tipping, we're saying that, three is saying that yes, it's unusual. It's usual business, right?
That it's unusual business.
So we're saying that that, that they, that's just the way, that's the business, and it's the cost of doing business, right?
And part of that is the forty-eight or forty-five dollars or whatever is, isn't the total cost? If you look at the total cost, if they were to tell us what their total cost in labor, trucking, insurance, and all of that to remove that waste, that's, that didn't go up 48%. Just the tipping fee is what went up to the 48%.
So a question real quick. The quarantine, what is the price tag on the quarantine? If the tipping was 257, and...
Company is hoping to keep roughly one and a half million dollars.
For the quarantine?
Correct.
Sorry, my mic was off.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. The annual cost impact of the quarantine is roughly $341,000. So over the two years, you know, roughly $680,000.
Okay.
Well...
So is that something you can say something?
Yes.
Respectfully, and if we have to come back later, I'm willing to do that, but I, the analogies of running a business are not anywhere close to what we do. We don't have the ability to change our rate. We don't, like, if you're running a store and your suppliers raise your rate, you can make a decision whether you raise your rate or keep your rate the same. You have a lot of flexibility. Our rates are Prop 218. We can't change them at all. So the contract, we have a contract with you, which is different than a business who's buying something from somebody else in that fluctuation. And the reason this contract has, it doesn't allow us to ask you for ordinary things, like you described. But it does ask you, and it doesn't even, it's not even ethical if something goes up double-digit percentages to say, oh, we can just absorb that. We can't. We're not in the double-digit profit business. We don't take any pleasure in coming to you to ask you for something. But we don't have the ability or the pleasure of adjusting our rate based on what's happening, specifically in the marketplace. We have to come to you. So in this particular contract, which is different than a normal business, it says you can't ask for ordinary things. I agree with that. But you can ask for extraordinary things, which is different than a normal business. And again, I heard the city manager say it. If you look at both of these events independently, and you go down there, it's not usual for a business to have that big of a percentage increase and to pass it on to somebody. And if that was usual, then people would do it all the time, because it's not market-driven. It's not something that we control. And we can't come back to you and say, oh, tomorrow we're raising our rate $10 because somebody raised our rate. We have, our rates are controlled by you. So we have to come to you and say, A, does it fit? So we have to come to you and say, A, does it fit ordinary or extraordinary? And if it does fit extraordinary, then we're allowed to ask for it and you're allowed to consider it. But I don't think it's the same as the fluctuation of a regular business who, every business owner has the ability to raise or lower their prices based on how many people are there or what they're paying for. We don't have that ability. Yes?
What is the annual impact that that increase has on or had on Athens?
I think the total was over $1 million that we had to absorb. We've absorbed.
In the disposal fee.
In both. The disposal was $200,000 and the citrus was $600,000. And I'm not looking at the sheet, but it was close to that. And it's not continual things, like the mayor said. I would accept, and I think it's a reasonable thing to say, where if you said, no, we don't want to give you a 3.5% rate increase, but we'll reduce the franchise fee one time for 3.5. That's a reasonable, equitable thing to do because then that makes us whole for that change. And then I'm going to make this number up. If the franchise fee is 10%, then it would go down to 7% and we would have a 7% every year. That would happen just once. And then every year it would be 7% and your ratepayers wouldn't have a change. And that would be acceptable to us. That's equivalent, because we operate on a net rate, not a gross rate. And that's a big difference. We have no ability to change it. You can change the gross rate. We can't change any of the rates. So that's why we're here tonight. And again, I ask you to respectfully think about and reconsider when you're looking at a rate increase and a tip fee that goes up that significantly, which isn't market-driven or isn't the China sword. I think the city manager said it in his preamble that these are, these are things that are not usual. And that's what we're here to have that dialogue for. Because of the difference of, like, we can't control, we're not a retailer. We can't control that pricing. We can't have 50% off sales. We can't say, oh, I got a great deal on this new product. I'm going to sell it at half price. We can't do that. If we pick up trash at half price, we lose a lot of money.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Let me just add one thing. I think that my answer, I know you had a question. So about the green waste, again, I know we've talked about it a lot and I've said a lot, but if I can just kind of go back to one of the comments I did make. You have to recall that Athens made a decision to pick up organic material in a certain manner. That decision precluded them from being able to take green waste to Limanara. I talked to the CEO of Limanara. Had they not put organic waste into their green waste, they would not have had a problem taking the green waste. They didn't care about any bugs, not a concern. So to say it's not a usual business risk, I think the business risk manifested itself because they made a decision which was unique to how they process the material. Had they picked it up in a manner similar to Harrison, there would not have been a business risk. There wouldn't have been a $490,000 loss of profit, loss of revenue. Wouldn't have existed. So I just want to, you know, kind of highlight that because there's been a lot of things said.
All right, for the, it's 11:14.
I just had a quick.
We've had a, go ahead.
Just, I hope we're not showing our hand here, but the concession that the mayor made about the franchise fee. I don't know, our finance director's not here, but is that encumbered or allocated? That it would be impacting our budget?
Yes, those revenues are in your general fund, except for the special fees. So it would be a reduction in your general fund.
Well, we don't know if they've been allocated somewhere or?
Oh, yeah, no, they're part of your adopted budget.
Okay.
So.
It would require a budget amendment.
Okay, thank you.
For the sake of time, it's 11:15. This is the first time that we're hearing this issue at a city council meeting. And I think we need to take. It's on. I think we need to bring this back at the September meeting. Do you all agree we should bring this item back?
I would agree, but I won't be here in September for a meeting, so.
With the next meeting.
The second meeting, I'll be here.
I'm wondering if we need to have a couple of council members that work with staff between now, I don't know if that's something we can even do today, to work with staff between now and when it comes back.
Finance committee?
Maybe the finance committee would be the easiest place since there's financial implications. Because this is the first time we, any of us have been a part of the conversation. And before it comes back, I think it would be good if it was, had been vetted a little bit more thoroughly.
One question I would have, if we do that, and I agree, I think, is what is the overall impact? What total, what burden are we putting on?
Our budget?
Our 22 years, over 22 years? How much more would we be spending or taking out of our budget to pay for that increase?
So there's some financial questions that I think we can, need to work out. And the finance committee can meet between now and the next council meeting, bring back some recommendations and bring back some data in terms of, and the impact if we do compromise, to see what that looks like on the existing budget and where we get that from, if it's been allocated. So we wouldn't be making the decision this evening.
I might suggest another option, which would be to just establish an ad hoc committee as opposed to the finance committee that's just an alternative that you have.
Because the finance committee is a standing committee. And then that way you would have to put together an agenda packet every time you were going to meet.
And that's a bad thing?
I would wonder if our council member, Crosswhite, would consider being on an ad hoc since you were part of the original contract negotiations.
Who was on the committee that approved this agreement? The franchise agreement?
Councilmember Crosswhite and Councilmember.
Ariza.
Ariza.
Well, and the only people still on the council, because you weren't.
I was on the council at a pass.
Oh, okay, so the three of us were here when the original contract.
So why don't you and I do the ad hoc work on this and bring back some recommendations by the second meeting in September so that you're present? Because it is a, decision's going to impact our residents. So we're going to come up with alternatives and solutions and Plan Bs and Cs. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just so that staff has some direction. And for Athens, it sounds like the primary interest is understanding the longer-term impacts of the rate based on what's already prepared in the franchise, as well as the request. Like, what does that look like for customers? And what would it look like if a portion or all of that was taken from the franchise fee itself, right? Okay.
Final, last one.
One final thing. Thank you, Felice. I really appreciate you guys. When somebody says something like, hey, if we would have put the trash in a bag originally, then it would be okay, that wouldn't be okay. Your rate would be much higher. We gave you that initial rate based on the most efficient and effective way to give you your diversion, to comply with 1383, and that wasn't putting it in a bag. We don't put this in a bag anywhere. The only people that put it in a bag are here because they can't do it another way. So I just want to be, like, if there are statements made to the subcommittee, which may or may not be accurate from a business standpoint in running the business, before you guys go down a path of, oh, yeah, that's a good point. If you could just, like, shoot Rondi questions or ask her, you know, if she could be a part of it, or just when you're asking questions or getting presentations, those kinds of statements have an impact on your decision. And then when you come back, you might say, oh, no, that's a good thing to say, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not attacked to veracity because putting a bag in and having people have bags and putting them in a container and then taking it to a place where you have to separate it and then take the clean green one place and take the food another place, doesn't work for us and it's more expensive for us. When we let customers just put it in with their green waste, go through pathogen reduction the way it's supposed to, and then take it to a facility that can handle that, which is what you receive from us, which was a lower rate. And I, we did those rates, so I remember that clearly. So I'm just asking that, as questions come up, if you could just be thoughtful about asking just for verification if somebody tells you something about a franchise fee or this or that, because it's, the comparisons can send you down a path that may or may not be accurate. And then you'll come to us and I don't want to spend all night trying to justify something that we did. I just want to tell you the truth.
Sure. The ad hoc committee would provide us the flexibility to bring together all interested parties.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we need a motion to create an ad hoc committee?
Just for the documentation of that, we'd appreciate that.
Is there a motion to create an ad hoc committee?
I would move that we create an ad hoc committee to study the financial impacts of making an amendment to the agreement with Athens.
And.
And then report.
With the members, including.
Do you want me to specify the names as well? Okay, all right, then, Councilmember Crosswhite and Mayor Chavez as the two members of the ad hoc.
Mayor, I would second that motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Ad hoc committee created. All right, thank you very much for your time tonight. We are moving on to the next agenda item.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Point of order, we're past 10:30. We have to have a vote to continue. We've just finished that last budget.
Is there a motion to?
And I will make that motion that we continue our meeting.
Motion by?
Don't kill me.
Is there a second?
I would second that to extend the meeting past 30.
There's a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are moving past 11:22.
Yay.
All right, we are moving on to 11E, response to grand jury report entitled prioritizing best practice street maintenance. Mr. Singer?
I'll let Mr. Goodman chime in, so this is his field.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I, I'm sorry, this is going to take about 30 minutes to get through this. But hey, we've been here a long time already, so that's another 30 minutes, right? No, really, this is, this is very brief. So we, shortly after I arrived, just for some background, I got a call from the civil grand jury and I, they wanted to interview me and I was like, what have I done? And I didn't really understand what they were about. And so then in December of last year, they came out and did interview me about our roads program. And it was a very good conversation that I had with them. I apologize in my, in my write-up, in my staff report, I referred to them as a grand jury and not a civil grand jury numerous times. So anybody who read that probably noticed that error. I didn't notice it till tonight. So anyway, I apologize for that. So they interviewed me, we talked about the roads program for well over an hour. And then they took my responses back and they, they came up six months later with their report, their findings. And they had two findings. They had one recommendation and one commendation. The findings were that our roads are bad in Santa Paula. And so we, that's pretty undeniable. And so we said, yeah, okay, we accept that, accept that finding. The second finding was that Santa Paula has competent people who can do something about it, basically. I can read it exactly what they said, but they, "with its dedicated and knowledgeable staff would make effective use of the funds allocated for street maintenance." And I believe that that's true. If I didn't believe that, I wouldn't be here. I would have retired already. But I believe we still have something to offer and we have a good staff. Then their recommendation was that the, that Santa Paula set a goal to reach best practice pavement conditions within 10 years. We were going to do that probably before we passed Measure R. But since Measure R has been passed, we now think we're going to reach that in five years. So that's, we're going to, we're going to accomplish that recommendation. And then the commendation, "the civil grand jury commends Santa Paula for its positive action in improving conditions by passing two sales tax measures that prioritize street maintenance." Now, so great job, because they don't give out commendations very often. This is something really unusual. So that was, that was the findings, the recommendation, the commendation. There's no fiscal impact from this, however, there is a fiscal impact from what we're going to do about our roads. And you're well aware of that. And we will be coming back to you with more about that. And so this is really a, I would invite any questions that you have at this time. This is more of a file, something for you to file away and congratulate yourselves for a job well done as a council.
Thank you so much, Director. Any other, any questions?
No, but I would recommend that, you know, we got 90 days to give them a response. I mean, hopefully by then we'll get a pavement management plan, five-year, and give them an idea of where we're going to be for the next five years.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Crosswhite.
I would not want us to accidentally miss the deadline, though. So I would, I would personally would be more comfortable if we just go ahead and send it. And then if we happen to get, you know, the pavement plan, whenever that's together, we could by all means go ahead and send that along. But I would not want us to accidentally miss the deadline.
Right, or at least allude to the fact that another one's forthcoming and if they want, we'll send it to them when we get it done.
We'll send a follow-up letter. All right, so we need a motion to approve the response letter and authorize the mayor to sign the letter.
I would move that we, yes, I would move item 11E. That we approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, council member. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you, go home, sir.
Thank you.
11F.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. 11F is the Fourth Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. Every year, on or about June, I'm sorry, July 1st, the city manager is reviewed for his past year's performance. After a series of closed sessions, this council directed the city attorney to prepare this Fourth Amendment that applies the cost of living adjustment, matching that of the executive management unit for the next two fiscal years. That was the MOU that council approved earlier today. So in accordance with that MOU's cost of living increase, effective the first full pay period following July 1st, 2025, the city manager will receive a 3% cost of living adjustment to his base salary. And then the second, effective the first pay period following July 1st, 2026, he'll again receive a 3% cost of living adjustment. That concludes my report. So council may vote to approve the Fourth Amendment as described.
All right, is there questions regarding the Fourth Amendment? Yes, ma'am.
Only just the technicality that it was on our closed session and then we haven't reviewed it at that point, so that was.
The performance evaluation review.
So I don't know. I presume, based on the other argument, we can, for the other ones, we can go ahead and.
So let me think about this for a second. Are we able to go into closed session in here and then come back to this item?
I would prefer if council, are you asking about, because this relates to a closed session today?
Correct.
For performance evaluation?
Yes.
Two separate items.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, two separate items, so no questions? Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I would move to approve the Fourth Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, alls in favor say aye.
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 All motion carries. Thank you very much. We are moving to item 12A, future agenda items. They were, an item that was brought up this afternoon from Ginger Girardi regarding the Ag Museum. And it was about empowering our representative on BCTC to advocate for adherence to the initial contract that was cited to make that a public space, have public hours.
And I think it was also just so that the council itself could advocate.
Take a policy position.
For, or make, take a position on that, so.
To adhere to that contract.
Yeah, yeah, so I.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, if, yes, that is.
First, is this a time-sensitive item?
Yes.
Because it is time-sensitive, we understand the contract's about to expire, so.
Well, the contract isn't about to expire, but the, if, if the museum is going to go forward with their plan, which they plan to implement by. forward with their plan, which they plan to implement by January 1st, there is a potential that they will need to ask for a change to their contract with VCTC, and given the length of time it takes us to get an item on the agenda, we could move slower than.
January.
That item coming before the VCTC board potentially, so we could argue that it is an urgency item that we would need to take up at our next meeting.
And that's why I would like to second that.
So we're basically putting this on the agenda for the next meeting? That's right, because we can't, oh, yeah. We're back to that circle.
But at least that would put it on our agenda before the next VCTC meeting, which would be two days after our next council meeting.
Okay. And all you need is, since it's time-sensitive, is a motion and a second?
Yes.
Which we have, so it's done, no? No vote required? We're time-sensitive, really?
I missed the second.
I think, wouldn't you? Okay, so that's.
I guess basically it takes two members to agree.
Okay, all right, well, the second item that was brought up this evening was issue of time sensitivity around seeing, having a discussion about the possibility of establishing maybe an ad hoc committee tied to the immigration issue.
Isn't that date on that, like, in the next?
14th or 13th or something?
Yeah, it's real close.
The matter.
We won't be able to do something on that issue in particular, but I think just putting on the agenda for discussion to potentially establish an ad hoc committee would be.
The matter that had a time sensitivity was whether the city would consider enjoining the ACLU lawsuit against the federal government. That deadline is approaching next week.
Yeah, but the time sensitivity of the issue itself is of concern as well. And so the idea for us to have a discussion to potentially form an ad hoc committee to address the issues with the community would be something to consider.
Without trying to argue a point, I'm less concerned about the urgency of being involved in a federal lawsuit next week as I am about looking after our community's needs and having those dialogues. So that's why, that's why I would support that, too.
Yeah.
Anyone can make the motion, but I would support doing that, but not feeling like we had to meet and get it done by, in days.
I don't know whether or not you could argue that this is urgent and time-sensitive. However, I do believe that we'll be coming to you, most likely at the first meeting in September, or at least one of your September meetings, with a request from Ventura County Community Foundation to endorse their humanitarian drive to help do fundraising around support for families that are facing these issues. So they're asking all cities to consider kind of a resolution of support, and we were planning to come to you with that opportunity, which obviously could be a much broader discussion as well. So I just throw that out there.
Yeah, and I think, but I think the ad hoc can do some of that initial legwork regarding what are some things a city can do.
Except that you can't establish the ad hoc tonight.
No, 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 no.
Right.
But is there a motion for that?
So what I hear the city manager saying is that they could potentially expand that item to include an option for creating an ad hoc. Is that what I hear you saying?
What I'm saying is, we may be agendizing in September a discussion around immigration and support for our community, which we could broaden to include the establishment of an ad hoc or the creation of a forum or whatever the council's desire is.
Yeah, it would be good if it came in options, too, because there are.
Of course.
There are a number of things that we could or might, we want to make sure the most productive things.
So motion, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Did we need that?
Yes.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I don't think you'll need that, because we're being asked by the community foundation to come to you.
But that's something I think that's a little separate.
I think it's separate.
The issue here is a community. The community foundation is external nonprofit coming here and asking for funding, so I think the urgency is.
Well, just for support, but, yeah.
I make, I second the motion, I can second. So we have two. Okay, done. Closed session. Can we just hit it in here?
Well, we're still on camera.
We have to turn it off.
Right. And we'd have to get the.
Sorry, Wes, we're going to go into closed session, sir.
I, it's, I think we need to go into the other room, though, because they still have to close up AV and the city clerk will have to finalize.
Don't worry, so we are going to move into a closed session meeting, and then we are adjourning after the closed session, and that will be, the adjournment will be reported by the city clerk or the city attorney.